Right, most of the gang is here. Good evening. And welcome to the Village of Mamaronek Board of Trustees regular meeting for March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three. Before we get started with the meetings, a couple of housekeeping items. I need a motion to close the work session soon. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We met an executive session and in executive session, the village board voted to hire Whitman, Osterman, and Hannah, which is a law firm, to represent the zoning board in the litigation of Teager McCorey versus the ZBA. And that was a four to one vote with trustee Lucas voting no. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi.
My allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. It's really popular, which says, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. There's emergency exit on my right, emergency exit on my left. If you have a cellphone, and I'm sure you won't do, please put it on mute. And I need a motion to open this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The first up is a presentation tonight, and it's a presentation by GHD. It's a presentation by GHD Engineering. And it's about the Mamaronek Dam, which is up by the, Mamaronek Dam is up by the Westchester Joint Water Works. The dam is owned by the Westchester Joint Water Works, but under an agreement, the village of Mamaronek. Hey, what's up, buddy? Welcome back. Can somebody please give a seat to our friend there? Very kind of you, sir. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Glenn Tippett has entered the building. After a long absence. Welcome back, Glenn. Okay, to continue, to continue where I was going. The village has a contract to maintain dam. Westchester Joint Water Works owns the dam. The dam used to provide drinking water in the area behind it for the community sometime during the nineteen seventies. The community and most communities started using New York City water, which is a great source of water. And the dam, the Westchester Joint Water Works was going to remove the dam, but the village thought that it had blood protection utility. So they asked them to keep it, and the Westchester Joint Water Works said, okay, you want us to keep it, you have to maintain it. And that was an agreement that the village and the joint water works entered into. So I'd like to introduce the gentleman from the engineering firm. What's your name, sir? You're the guy who just got up. Please state your name and affirm your work for, and we'll go through the slideshow.
Sorry, I do not have a slideshow, but I'm prepared to speak.
Okay, extensively.
My name's Ken Coutinho. I'm with GHD, and again, I was hired to evaluate the dam. So every ten years, high hazard classification dams are required to go through an engineering assessment, and they state work. This is a high hazard dam. This was its first initial EGA. So we did a full scope of structural stability, geotech analysis, and hydrologic and hydraulic analysis on the dam. Summary of the findings were, dam is structurally sound. It's not in deficiency structurally, but it is hydraulically, does not pass the spillway design flood. So in other words, if there's a, you know, a storm event that this dam needs to be designed for, which is a high hazard event, it's considered the half probable maximum flood. It is unable to pass that in overtops. So under that condition.
You just used the term. Could you explain it? Is the high hazard?
High hazard classification, yeah. All that has to do, high hazard classification means that the dam is going to breach or fail, that there's potential for life loss downstream.
Okay.
Yep. It has nothing to do with the actual, you know, the dam integrity itself. That hazard classification is just if there was a potential disaster.
Okay, thank you.
So summary of the findings were, dam does not pass the, have to be a massive event. And there would need to be some type of rehabilitation to accommodate for that storm event. We presented, you know, a few options that, you know, conceptually can bring the dam into compliance. Number one would mean to, you know, to apply for a variance, which would include the hardening of the structure. So maintaining the existing structure as it is, the same exact width, the same exact height, and then hardening the structure so that it had a useful life, extending its useful life. You know, so that it would stand, you know, another hundred years before we have to, you know, consider, you know, some other capital project. Number two would be an auxiliary spillway that could handle the storm event that it needs to be designed for.
So diverting the water around the dam?
Diverting the water around the dam, that's correct, yep. If there was a storm event that started to overtop, it would be diverted, and then, you know, we would be able to handle that capacity. But the problem with that alternative right now is that we're limited on space. So we have, obviously, Mamaronek Ave, you know, to the south, and then to the north, we have private property. So there would have to be some type of a work agreement easement, you know, associated with that alternative for it to be feasible. Number three would be a new dam. You know, I guess the pros of that would be, you know, you would be providing that flood control aspect of the dam. There would be a new configuration, you know, we would have, we would be confined to the width of the stream. You know, so there would be no acquisition of, you know, private property. There would be no disturbance to Mamaronek Ave to the south. You know, we would achieve that through, there's a couple of different concepts that the spillway could potentially take on, you know, to handle the hydraulic capacity required. And then number four would be removal of the dam altogether, decommissioned. And this obviously does not provide flood control, but our report indicates that, you know, the dam itself right now is providing approximately protection up to a three-year gap.
And just, can you quantify it for your event, for the folks?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And myself?
Yeah, that's a common misconception in our industry, you know, everyone refers to, you know, common storm frequencies or, you know, two, ten-year, a hundred-year storm events. So a hundred-year storm event does not infer that you're going to have a, you know, a once-in-a-hundred-year event. It's an occurrence of one in a hundred that that could happen in any given day of the year. So a hundred-year event is actually going to happen about every seven years. So, you know, think about, you know, buying a home in the floodplain, more than likely going to experience a hundred-year event. You know, so that's a serious risk you take when, you know, you acquire property in the floodplain.
So it's for a year?
A three-year event, yeah, we're, so the three-year event, we're talking, I mean, that's monthly, we're talking a monthly basis. You're experiencing something that's going to, you know, potentially, you know, be at the capacity of this impound.
A couple inches of rain?
Yeah, that's right. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be the last and final alternative would be to decommission the facility. You know, and that's, that's very trending in the industry right now. You know, if there is, if there is, you know, not that flood control component to the dam, if it's no longer used for drinking, you know, portable water, removal of something that has long-term O and N, you know, operation and maintenance costs associated with it. You know, just that long-term liability, you know, if there was a, that shop at Breach, you know, the liability associated with that. You know, decommissioning is very popular right now.
To get effective flood relief, if we were going to build a new dam?
Yep, that's right.
How much higher would you have to go?
We would have to run some analysis on that. I mean, it would be not significantly higher. Again, that would be based on, so there's a couple of concepts. One would be an arch, an arch structure, which would increase the length of the weir. So you wouldn't have to raise it that much, but you'd be widening the structure.
Kind of like the Hoover Dam, is that right?
Correct, yep. Another one would be a labyrinth structure, which is more of a zigzag shape. So you're again increasing the length of the weir, not increasing, you know, the overall width of the footprint. And then what they call piano keys, it's another more of a complex spillway. If you can envision, you know, every other piano key kind of up and down, that's kind of the configuration that it takes. And that again increases spillway capacity so that you wouldn't have to, you know, elevate the structure significantly.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so those would be the four alternatives that, you know, that would be the kind of the next steps. Like I said, we were hired to complete the ten-year engineering assessment. We're at the stage now where we've presented our draft to the, to the village. You know, next steps would be to submit to DEC so that we can check that box and say, we've done this, we've done this analysis. DEC is going to respond back to us and now say, you know, your dam, dam has been deemed unsound and deficient. You know, what are, what's your schedule to make this dam in compliance with regulations? Will be their response, and then, you know, that's kind of the next step, so. You know, where the village needs to go.
Okay, everybody aboard? Jerry?
Ken, so you talked about the trend for decommissioning. What is that? Well, in the projects that GHD is working on, what's the, what's the cost of decommissioning a dam compared to the three or four different types of dams that you?
Yeah, so, I mean, I won't put numbers out there tonight for this specific project, but I can give you, you know, without conceptually coming up with, you know, designs, but I can give you kind of a, you know, a rough order of magnitude, kind of what each alternative would, you know, be in the ballpark of, you know. So if you apply for a variance, you know, likely there's going to be a hardening component. They're going to want to see some, some type of rehab associated with that project. Again, it's going to make sure this is going to stand, you know, the test of time, you know, that we have some useful life that we're adding to this impound. So that's probably your most cost-effective alternative. And really, you know, that's, that's going to, you're going to be starting in the, you know, easily spending a million dollars, you know, to apply for a variance.
Just to, yep, go ahead. That, that option does not enhance flood protection?
Does not, that's correct. Decommissioning would be kind of your next step up in the cost price point. You know, of this scale, you know, a dam of this size, we have, you know, we have multiple dams that we're working on within Westchester County right now of similar scale. I can tell you that's going to be, you know, you're talking three million dollar price point.
To remove the dam?
To remove the dam. Because there's going to have to be an environmental assessment associated with that. You want to make sure that, you know, there's no sediment release. That's, that's a big thing with decommissioning. Making sure that there's no, you know, contamination associated with it. So there would be sampling of the sediment behind the dam. Or potential removal, you know. You know, so that could be, you know, fairly extensive dredging project.
And that obviously provides no flood?
No, no flood protection, that's correct. Removal of the long-term O and N, but no flood protection. So next, you know, climbing next up to price point, you know, you're looking at, you know, something of providing, you know, auxiliary spillway. You know, that's probably going to be, you know, similar, similar price point as decommissioning.
The bypass you're talking about?
Yeah, bypass. You know, the big question mark there is, you have private property to remove. You know, that's, that's an unknown at this stage. And then, you know, you know, going into a new dam, that's going to be your most expensive option. You know, using the existing as, you know, part of the construction means, you know, being able to divert flow to the dry.
Yeah.
Yep.
If the area behind the dam, the, where the reservoir used to be.
Yep.
Were substantially deepened.
Yep.
And widened, whatever, would the design of the dam have to change?
The design of the dam?
Or the, or the, whatever we deal with, would that, would that impact it, in terms of it's holding back more water?
You know, again, you're going to have to pass a certain design storm. So the storage within the reservoir, you know, that you're just, that's just, that just means you're going to hold, you know, be able to hold more in the reservoir. If the reservoir was dredged, you just have, you know, that capacity within the reservoir. But the design of the actual dam and what it's, what it's, you know, the capacity that it's able to pass would remain the same.
So, I mean, would you, would there be mechanisms for, let's say, drawing down the reservoir in advance of the storm and then allowing it to fill up to, so?
Yeah, if there, if there's a new dam, yeah, flood control, you know, active flood control is definitely, you know, something that, you know, dam orders, you know, that's, that's kind of part of the operation.
And that would be more effective than what we have now?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
It requires a new bed, but?
Yeah, new, new dam, but you would be able to survive, you know, full flood protection for downstream residents, yeah.
And upstream?
That's the one, what, what type of flood that could deal with? I mean, you said?
Yeah, we have to run some, a little bit of an H and H analysis on that. That would kind of be next steps. You know, more of a detailed, you know, concept feasibility study.
Just, just for the folks playing along at home and me, what's H and H? Hydraulics?
Hydrology and hydraulics.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks.
Ken, so, going back to the DEC.
Yes.
So the work, the work that GHD has completed, and once it gets to Mr. Smith up at the DEC.
That's correct, yep.
He was threatening, mid-summer of last year, he was threatening an order on consent because of the fact that these reports haven't been, haven't been commissioned and submitted and all of that stuff. So this, this clears us up for those items. Remember those four items that we talked about?
That's correct. Once this report goes in, like I said, then you're going to, you're going to restart the clock a little bit, you know, and then, then his next question is going to be, all right, you know, we've found the dam, it's been rated as unsound because it can't pass the design storm. So now what's your next step?
Right.
He's likely not going to put a consent order on yet because he understands it takes time for capital projects like this to happen. But yes, you guys would be, have met the requirements of your initial EGA. So the regs changed in twenty twelve, so this, this dam was, you know, a decade kind of behind needing to have this report done. So that's the reason why you guys were, you know, kind of getting phone calls from John Smith.
From John Smith, yeah, okay.
I'm, everybody aboard? I think a couple of questions from the audience, because we have a big agenda today. Peggy's?
Just a little one.
Peggy was first undocked.
Good evening there, Mayor and Board. Peggy Daxson, sixteen sixteen North James Street. I'm here with some of my neighbors from Harbor Heights, and this is a giant concern, obviously, of everyone who lives in the Heights. I don't need to say it, but I will. Twenty-one houses got water in their living quarters, not in their basements during, either. And while we can't seem to make the hydrology work, we all know, living in the Heights, the dam does serve some sort of protection. And if we're saying it's a one-in-three-year storm, it's every month it's helping us. Couple of things that I don't know if everyone is aware of, there are valves in the dam currently. They're buried under years and years and years worth of silt. But if that could be looked at as part of this project, maybe if those valves were made workable again in this modification, or having to totally rebuild the dam, maybe we would get more help and more flood mitigation. Be able to do more of a version of the first project with some changes, with that MTV building of old dam. So I really stress that that we look into, please. Also, as sure you know, but I'm going to reiterate again, up county, Harrison is doing a huge amount of building. White Plains is doing a huge amount of building. We are at the bottom of the drain, and Harbor Heights is the first neighborhood to get hit. We see huge changes just in the last four or five years from the new homes that were added on, off of Windfield. And now there are seven more going north of Windfield, right by the other side of the dam. And there are more being proposed on Windfield, where west, I'm not sure exactly what street, but the Heights really need some help, as we know, the Army Corps is only going to be partially helpful, so whatever we can do.
The, the board tonight, work session, pardon me, discussed that situation with the, the building in Harrison. And we are going to send a letter to the Harrison Board asking that we become an interested party.
Thank you, and I think we should ask them for a number of different projects, because it's not just.
Well, yeah, we did. What we're going to do is ask for any project that impacts us, any project that borders us.
If I may, we should probably look into White Plains and Midway, because if they put a hundred and sixty-eight homes there, that's going to affect us as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
You know, we're going to do Mr. Tippett, and just for Mr. Tippett, because he's a little incapacitated today. When you say your question, I'm going to repeat it to the audience and hope you can hear it.
Okay. I want to follow what Lou and Leani?
Leilani.
Leilani?
Leilani. I want to make sure to pronounce it right.
That's okay.
Follow what they said. With the water retention, you can keep building the dam, the dam up, but eventually the water behind you, it's going to either find a way around or it's got to go someplace. We also going to do a study, because what used to happen is, one of the reasons they lowered the reservoir is Mamaronek Avenue used to flood all the time, and when they wanted to develop up there, they didn't want that problem anymore. So you can, you can dredge, you can dredge the reservoir. But once you reach a certain amount of, the reservoir goes over and floods Mamaronek Avenue up there. At that point, where, where is the water going to go? And you have to be quite aware of where the water is going to go for two reasons. Number one, it's going to affect properties up there. And number two, if you take care of that egress in a big storm, and you already have a problem on Mamaronek Avenue by the highway where that egress is closed, you would completely cut off the people from Harbor Heights, from help from, from either end. So that's just something that, you know, for every foot you build up the dam, how much more water retention is going to take, and where is that water going to, where is that water going to be retained?
Right, I think that's what the gentleman was talking about, the H and H study, right?
Yeah, and so, I mean, you guys have already paid for that model, it's created. So it doesn't, doesn't take much of an effort to, you know, extend that. It's already part of the Army Corps software, it was part of the study that we did, so you have that in hand.
Okay, thank you. Tony?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. So I'm not sure if I'm speaking as, I don't think I'm, I'm the chair of the Flood Committee, but I have to be careful what I say, because we didn't discuss this whole issue at the Flood Committee.
We have to recognize that you're chair, but you're speaking for yourself.
Okay, so I'm speaking for Tony Yolba. So just point some points of information. One, when we we start talking about flood control on Mamaronek, I've been using the term holistic watershed approach, which is basically all the stuff from White Plains and New Rochelle to us, right? When I mentioned that a year or so ago, the mayor and the board used the term parallel flood projects. So those are projects that would happen in conjunction with the Army Corps. So I think this is a parallel project, right? I think we've been lucky to have GHD study it. We also have the state doing a study on the whole watershed, both the Mamaronek Sheldrake and the Blind Beaver Swamp, right? And that company is called, that engineering firm is called SLR. But they're also doing an H and H study, and Bernie and I walked their engineer and their scientists around the whole area, including the dam, about a month ago, three weeks ago. So they're going to be coming back. We asked them to look at the whole thing from a holistic point of view, and that's their approach to this. So I think that between the H and H study from GHD and SLR, maybe we could reconvene in a, you know, a month, three weeks, we're not going to get this, to see what all of that comes together to look like. Because I think we need a lot of these projects to really get good flood control in the morning, not just the Army Corps project.
Agreed.
That's, that's my sense.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, would you come up to the mic, please?
He just questioned about the dam.
Could you come up to the mic, please?
Yeah, yeah, it's about the dam, right?
Yeah, right now it's about the dam.
Okay, so, it's to do with the flood and not the dam, so.
All right, go ahead.
I don't know if anyone's ever addressed this. I've been to a few meetings, I'm going to be honest.
What's your name, sir?
I live on Elliot, Damon Roman Elliot, one thirty-one Elliot Avenue. Been flooded a couple of times, swam out the last time on my own. No one's addressed the insurance issue now, because all our insurance rates have gone up incredibly. And I don't know if anybody knows, but FEMA, the insurance rates are more than homeowners' insurance, with less of, there's a cap, I think, of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if your house burns to the ground, you'll get your full value of your house. If your house floods, you only can get that much. But yet, the cost of it is almost three, in my case, three times the amount. So I just wanted to, what would be the avenue to go, maybe try to get some relief for that? Is there any way we could do, like, is there any, like, legislation for maybe a grant or something to give us a little bit or wait? Or like, on, like the STAR program, is there anything that, that can help us? Maybe we can get, it looks like they're never going to get a tax bill, but what about some kind of relief for insurance?
I, I think that that's something that you'd have to take up with the state, because the state regulates the insurance industry, but it's, it's a.
There's no money the village can help us out with, any kind of, nothing?
I gotta be honest with you, I mean, that's not.
Well, like I said, insurance is almost, went up in my case like thirty percent. But it doesn't give you any more money and all that, you know, we've been destroyed like three times.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's just keep it to the dam.
We have gotten one.
Okay, just let me keep it to the dam, all right? Then do it at the, address it in five minutes, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jordan Stern. I'm also on Elliot Avenue. It seems with the dam, the only viable option is to rebuild it, because that was the only option that would give double mitigation. So in Harbor Heights, they had twenty-one houses downstream on Elliot, and that whole area was completely demolished. So my house is built, the first floor is twelve and a half feet above water, above the ground. We got three and a half feet in our living space. So when we're talking about the rebuilding of the dam, that seems, we don't, we can't have every month and a hundred years, every seven years. We can't have water in our home every seven years. So, and, and, you know, all of down Mamaronek Avenue in the Washingtonville, and, you know, that whole area was completely underwater. So to prevent that or help mitigate that is to rebuild the dam. I don't see any other option other than that. We don't want a Band-Aid. I understand studies, however, I'm inundated with studies. We have been studying it since nineteen seventy-two, the same result, the same answers, and the same problem of, again, it is worse. So I'm older, and to tear up your basement and your home and to live through that is, you know, just unacceptable. It's just unacceptable. So I urge that you don't Band-Aid it, and you don't take option one, two, and you go for option three, and you rebuild the dam, because we cannot live here. And you're talking about a whole community, what to do, like, what to do, move to where, then, then who moves in, and then it's the same problem. So my family's been in Mamaronek since, you know, in the sixties, and we don't want to move, right, we want to stay.
We want, we want to stay.
And I appreciate that. So I urge the committee to take that, take that option, rebuild it, let's get this over with, let's help the people, and, and let's live peacefully.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Mr. Come on.
Bernie Smarta, Blood Committee.
We wouldn't want you speaking any of them.
The way I feel is, we need to learn from our mistakes, and our mistake with the Army Corps was weighted, and weighted. Was weighted and weighted and we talked about consistency. And worried about money. And we cannot wait for this. We need to learn from our mistakes. Take the bull by the horns and get this project done. Let's not waste money on trying to recommission this hundred year old structure. Let's get flood control. The people of Mamaroneck, one third of Mamaroneck can sleep at night. Okay, because I don't know about everyone, but I know what it's like to shovel raw sewage out of my basement. I know what it's like.
Living room, not just basement.
Yes, living room. So this cannot be shelved. We cannot, we have to learn from our mistakes. You this cannot be sit on and second studies and all this and consistency. And environment, this is not about the environment. It's about real people.
Safety.
Safety, real people, not organisms. Not the ducks, not the fish. The fish and the ducks will survive. Actually, you know what? A matter of fact, it will probably get better. It will probably be a better habitat for that. After the the rivers flowing and they control the rivers and they do the releases when they're supposed to do the releases. Okay, but this cannot, we cannot sit on our hands on this one. Okay, I know it's gonna be a lot of money, but that's what we pay Jerry for. He's great and what he does, him and Dan. They do a great job and let's get this project done. Do not shelve this project. Because I'm not gonna let you guys shelve it. I'm gonna be, you know, I'm gonna be on your back.
Or we know.
I'm gonna be on top of you day and night. This this is not, this is not about me. This is about the future of Mamaroneck.
Cheers.
We need to set examples for the whole country that we can solve these problems. Whether it be flood mitigation with a dam, flood mitigation with new building codes, with however it has to be. We have to set an example for it. And this cannot happening. This can't happening. It's 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 three and a half times, almost three and a half times I've been flooded in twenty years. It's I'm done with it.
Okay.
Done with it.
I I and I agree with you Bernie a hundred percent. I just wanna point out. And I and I do think that the dam should be replaced and used for flood mitigation. But I just wanna be honest about the hurdles that we're gonna have to go through. And I'm not saying we're not gonna have to go through. But you you talk to me a lot and you know, I always tell you what the next step I think is. So you know, if if the board decided we get a get a, you know, a cost on replacing the dam and making it more flood resilient, that's one, right? Then we gotta go to Westchester General Water Works because they own the land. And negotiate with them about, you know, allowing us to come on and, you know, rebuild a new dam there. So it so there are a couple of components here and then hopefully we can get some money from our friends in New York State and the federal government to make this happen. So I just, I just wanna tell you, you know, the the three components, you know, so that you know how we're moving forward.
Yes. I understand that. I understand. I mean, I want the dam yesterday, but I I I get it.
But she wants to see movement.
But this, but this can't.
You you can't language.
Learn from our mistakes and the Army Corps, we made a lot of mistakes. Okay, we we sat on our hands, we shelved it. We went through this consistency. I don't wanna say a bad word, but we went through.
There's no, yeah.
We went through hell just to get this project. And it's and we can, we we have to learn from our mistakes because we will get flooded again.
Yep.
And the Army Corps, whether you believe it or not, I think it's a good thing and I think it's. Has to be done. The lower half of the river has to be done. And this is the upper half of the river and this is protecting us from White Plains, Harrison and Scardale. Which a tremendous amount of water comes down that river system. Tremendous. So to recondition this, this thing, I don't think that's the way to go. We need real true blue flood control. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
Yeah, I'm Salk Ludi.
I saw.
Living uh New Street. I've uh I can echo everything Bernie says. I'm not gonna go over it all, but the one thing I wanna add to is that. In addition to replace a dam, I want you to include dredging, reservoir and deep on the reservoir. Someone had an issue about potentially overflow affecting properties out outside of red wall. I strongly believe that if it's done right. And you raise the dam, raise the height of the dam and dredge down deeper, okay? Go down instead of out. You'll have better capacity if you include that into the estimate of the dam, have it go down deep. As you replace it, I think you're gonna have a better flood control lines. And I'd like to see flooding go away from Mariner.
Me too.
Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carolyn Leanne and I'm resident in Mariner. Um, I've been flooded a couple of times and I live in an apartment. I'm not having a house. I do lose my car. Um, like what he says, it's, yeah, it's a problem. I can't sleep at night, like he says, I worry. I had to buy a car, so I mean, two months.
Thank you.
Can't wait, wait four years, five years down the road. Like he said, we can sleep with the community. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna back my, what you just said.
Yeah.
Because none of us can sleep at night, okay? And that night was the worst ever, okay? We had, you know, I'm disabled now and I've had my fair share of hardships. I don't wanna end up dead the next time because I already died. And now I don't wanna die again, okay? That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll take Doreen and then we're we're gonna move on to.
Mayor Murphy, what maintenance are you responsible for for the dam?
I I don't have the contract department. I'm sure you do, Doreen.
I do and I'm good too. I will also say that G H D. I'll send it by email. Did an evaluation in twenty fifteen with costs for all the things that they talked about tonight. So this is what the village is responsible for. Uh, operation maintenance and repair of the twenty four inch valves. Maintenance and repair of the twenty four inch pipeline and intake structure. Don't have my glasses. Maintenance and repair of the twin conduits. And screens, including the periodic cleaning thereof. Maintenance of the access way to the interior of the dam, keeping same secure. And also you're responsible for the dredging of ponds. So here's the maintenance agreement. So I don't understand. Why the village is involved with something unless Mayor Murphy or going to the board of uh the Water Works. To deal with the dam because I also have the ownership papers and I'll give them to Augie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, sir, for your presentation tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
You know, we appreciate your time. Thanks for waiting, you know. He's been here since five o'clock. Alright, uh. First item is, good night, Tony. The first item is communication to the board. Uh, just for folks who are communicating to the board. There's a five minute time limit on communication to the board. There's another communication to the board at the end of the meeting if you if you still feel the need to talk. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'll probably use over the full five minutes.
Okay.
Uh, name is Francis Lively and I live on Claflin Avenue in Oriente. And my purpose tonight is to address my concerns to the board on both the proposed budget. And the board's recent actions around the extension of the village manager's contract. What I'm going to say is my opinion and my recommendations as a tax paying resident of the village. My comments will be critical. However, they're delivered as someone who raises children in this community and wants to see the community thrive for my kids and for all residents. I love living here and I believe all of us here tonight share common ground in that regard. I also wanna express my gratitude to each of you serving the community. It's my first time presenting to the board. Uh regardless of differences in our views, I give credit where it's due. When you're giving time and service to the community, it should be recognized and I can commend and thank you all for that dedication. Now, my concerns with the budget. Uh, there's many, but I wanna be respectful of everyone's time, so I've tried to synthesize them into two. The budget budget is based on assumptions that appear very flawed and ignore current economic trends. Second, based on the board's lack of transparency and the questionable legality surrounding the extension of the contract to the village manager. This budget process lacks legitimacy and the board of trustees has lost the trust of many of its constituents. Let's start with the first issue. The facts are the budget assumes a seven point six four percent increase in expenditures year over year. This increases significantly more on a year over year basis than any budget proposal over the last five years. The budget expenditure increases will be funded by property tax revenues, non property tax revenues and allocations from the fund reserved. The village manager is assuming property taxes to account for approximately sixty two percent of revenues. That's very low on a percentage basis when compared to the last five years. And the remainder is to come from non property tax revenues. His projections are based on continued U S economic growth. And he's projected an astounding increase in non property tax revenue of twenty one point two five percent. I urge the board to study these assumptions closely and with a critical eye. Consensus is that we are in for an economic downturn. Our village should prepare accordingly. We're amidst the highest sustained inflation seen in decades and a banking crisis. Add on top of this heightened geopolitical risks and the global economy is in a very precarious place. Significant layoffs have begun throughout the economic sector and the expectation is that a prolonged recession may be imminent. The consequent impacts on property values in our village and consumer spending that will follow will seriously impact the village revenue assumptions. This year and until such recession subsides. Moreover, there's trends in our state that must not be ignored. New York led the nation in population outflow with over four hundred thousand residents leaving the state over the last two years. The number one reason for the outflow for all income brackets is that taxes and the cost of living are too high. Increasing property taxes, water and sewer lep- levees, et cetera, may be necessary to fund critical operations. But the village must examine what expenditures are critical. Those who are mobile, primarily the wealthy and highest taxpayers, will continue to leave to states with cheaper cost of living and greater opportunities. Losing these taxpayers will continue to create budgetary holes at the state and local level and should be considered when formulating our budget. Most of our budget expenditure increases are in salaries and benefits. As well as the addition of new positions. I know benefit costs on existing employees are increasing at a rapid rate. It is an issue private and public entities have to contend with. However, I urge the board to reconsider its proposed salary and staff increases. No employees should be seeing salary increases at a rate greater than the rate of inflation, which is the case throughout this budget. Moreover, there's no basis provided for adding staffing positions throughout departments. Now is not the time to be increasing staffing and the locked in benefits associated with new positions. It's a time to do more with less. Lastly, many expenditure line items show no growth. These include products and services. Given the inflationary environment, it seems inconceivable that these line items would not have year over year increases. Reflecting the current inflationary environment. Either these assumptions are flawed or there's fluff in the budget that should be addressed. Now to address the second flaw in the budget process. One that I think is much more difficult to contend with than the flawed revenue and expense assumptions. The budget is prepared by the village manager.
Please wrap it up.
I haven't used up my final.
Yeah, she did, sir. That's his timing. I don't I don't wanna be argumentative, but please wrap it up.
And the community must have faith in the recommendation recommendations of that manager for a valid budget process. Transparency is the hallmark of legitimacy and trust in our government. The board did not act in a transparent manner in approving a new contract for the village manager. As a result, many of us, myself included, have lost trust in the village manager and the board. Again, just to review the facts, our village manager is the CEO of our village. It is meant to be an A political position. The number of issues surrounding the village manager's conduct have been reported in the past year, which the village manager and the board conceded. It also came to light that the village manager maintains a second job in another.
Mister Lively, your time is well up.
I'll give the mic back.
You you know, you can't do that. That's not how it works, pal. So please.
You can, yeah, just come back.
I appreciate.
You know, there there are rules for a reason. And you know, people have to abide by the rules and I'm sorry, but your time is well up.
If you can, there's other times in the um in the in the agenda where you can come back and finish this meeting if you can.
No, please, you're done. There's there's a reason for this because people abuse it. And there are people in this audience who are gonna say, oh, you let this guy go and now I'm gonna take as much. I I I'm.
I was here at the last meeting and you gave people extra time.
No, no, I didn't, sir. Please, I'm asking you to, please relinquish your spot or or email that to the board. This is like a a real important, you know, thing that we do here to try and, you know, maintain some like order in the in the meeting. I'm asking you, please.
I'm gonna finish. It also came to light that the village manager maintains a second job in another town in New Jersey. Any one of these actions alone could be the basis for dismissal. Instead, our board rewarded the village manager with a new contract, a raise and the ability to continue to work a second job. And as I understand it, to pay for his car usage to and from that job. All of this was done in an executive se- session closed to the public. The law is clear that funds may not be appropriated outside a public meeting. The case law I reviewed does not support the board's actions. It is incumbent on the board to request the village attorney provide a legal opinion as to the legality of its actions.
We have.
Anything less than an unqualified opinion should not be accepted if the board intends to proceed.
We have. Thank you.
I can see this is going. Thank you very much. Uh just let me, let me just clear up a couple of inaccuracies. The village does not pay uh for Mister uh Barbaro to use his car going anywhere other than village business. He does not use his car to go to his part time job. That's, you know, something that he was gleaned from the internet. And there's no basis in fact. And, you know. And, you know, the village feels very secure in what we've done in improving his contract in executive session. We reported as soon as we came out of executive session. That has been done many, many times by other other boards. Uh, it it was done in twenty twenty uh by uh a board uh which had a different constitution. And a different complexion and, uh, you know, nobody complained about it. But now all of a sudden, it's a new board. It's a new issue, right? Uh, so I I just wanna point that out and our village attorney feels very sure that we acted legally. And, you know, thank you for, you know, your opinion and I I would ask you in the future to please observe the rules of the meeting.
No, I appreciate that, but I'd love to respond to it.
No, 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 you 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 were well done. Please, sir. Allow other people an opportunity. You 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 you're completely violating the rules and I'm asking you, please, to relinquish the mic.
Thank you for your time.
So, um, just to follow up.
Just to name for record.
Yeah, uh, my name is Amy Siswa. So originally we're gonna go through the budget tonight, but I just wanted to add to what Francis said that. The process, the legalities of question, as the Journal News reporter wrote about. Uh, but also it's a lack of democracy and it's a a an effort to be opaque in a backroom deal. Which should not be the case in our small village. So I just wanna go through some numbers too because as I said in the last meeting, I've I haven't had any dealings with Jerry, so I don't have an opinion. But I am concerned about the process and backroom deal. I'm also concerned. But I am concerned about the process and backroom deal. I'm also concerned about our budget. So the these are from the budget. Um and so our increases in our operating budget up until a few years ago were one to three percent. Then we've gone up four percent, five percent, and now eight percent. And for reasons that I agree with. What Francis was saying, now is not the time to go up eight percent. If you're wondering what this red line is, this is when we hired Jerry. It was in January of twenty nineteen. So I'm concerned about him being a good steward of our of our um budget. On property taxes. The budget that we have in front of us assumes that only sixty two percent. Of the budget, which is grown by eight percent, will come from property taxes. Here's what it's been for the last decade. It's never been under sixty six percent. It's gone as high as seventy two percent. Now what happens if? The non property tax revenue, which is supposed to make up the difference. In our budget, we assume that our revenue is going to go up twenty one percent. In recession, starting next year. What happens if that doesn't? What happens if? The property taxes the same percentage as it has been historically, closer to sixty eight percent. What that means. Is we would have an eleven percent increase in our taxes. And I apologize, it was not time to do all the math, but I did do a video that will runs runs through and explains all this. If it stays at sixty eight percent. Village manager's contract is astounding, two hundred and forty three thousand dollars. We just got a raise to going up to two hundred and seventy three thousand dollars. Governor Hokel, who works full time, makes two hundred and twenty five thousand. This is preposterous. We also, in a January two thousand twenty three meeting. Uh gave a seventeen percent increase to our deputy uh village manager and the secretary. An extra thirty six thousand dollars, which I understand they have more work and I appreciate they're working harder, so they should get paid more. But that should become out of Jerry's salary. He's working part time. If we're paying the next.
Hold hold on, hold on, I have to correct you. Jerry does not work part time. That that is just absolutely false. No, 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 no. But the rules of the meeting allow people to correct mis- misstatements. And I'm just saying, that is untrue.
Excuse me?
Untrue.
Then you're saying that the reporter at the Journal News has it wrong?
He said that that he isn't working full time here. That's wrong, because he works full time here. He works part time somewhere else. That doesn't mean he's not working full time. I work full time. I work full time. I worked.
This is not your time. This is my time to talk. You are violating.
You're wrong.
The code of.
How would you know?
Because I brought the code.
The code of what?
Want me to read it to you?
The code of what?
You're supposed to conduct meetings.
Yes, when when you're allowed to. You're allowed, please don't yell. Please don't yell.
Well, if you didn't cut me off, I wouldn't be yelling.
If you weren't saying things that weren't true, why wouldn't we cut you off?
Well, you can take it up with the uh reporter at the Journal News since it was on the front page.
Okay, and everything on the front page is always true.
Uh, so I just want to say in total, these are the additional cost, the village of Mamaronec residents. And listen, we want to do the important things. I think we all will support whatever needs to happen to the flood victims. And whatever needs to be done. That is a bond that I I know all of us would stand behind. But here's what we're facing, an eight percent increase in our operating budget. If you check your water bill, which came today, it's increased by fifteen percent. At the last meeting, they, our board voted to increase our storage charge, which will also be on your water bill. Which will cover part of Jerry's salary and part of um the deputy village manager's salary. So even if it's not in a budget, it's going to be coming to you in your storage bill. We all know what happened in the unfortunate circumstances of the library. That's also something that we in the village are going to pay for, because we want to keep the library open. So we're all of this heading into a recession. I would ask that we. This is my final slide. This is what the Mamaronec, and I see a lot of our friends who watch one here. I'm going to finish since I was cut off. This is what the Mamaronec School Board is doing to bring on their new superintendent. It's a months long effort. It involves everyone in the community. They all get an opinion. Starts or she starts in September. We did this in a backroom deal without any transparency, that you can be conducted how the school board's doing it. People should have an opinion. People should get to be heard by the board. And this amount of money we're paying is the highest in Westchester for a nineteen thousand person. Village. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Anybody else? What's your name?
So, um, I have a statement I wanted to make and then I have a question for the board. So, um, I don't want to go back over things that have already been said, because they've already been said. Um. I also agree that there has been. There's been an issue in the process, the transparency and in the integrity of the way our democracy is supposed to work. Concerning the village manager's contract and. You you just said, you know, Mister Mayor, uh that two years ago, something similar happened. Doesn't mean it was right then. It it, you know, a president isn't always a good president. It does mean that it happened and maybe the community wasn't as engaged at that point. I've hired a lot of people in my life throughout my career and I've fired a lot of people. And if somebody had acted in the manner of the village manager, I don't think I would be giving them effectively a raise and a promotion. It's just. It's ridiculous and it's not how any functional business would operate. So I understand that from what I hear, he's an incredibly talented individual. I don't know. I really, I really don't and it's irrelevant to the situation. We're not talking about the person. We're talking about the procedure. And the way the procedure occurred is a gray area at best. So in my opinion personally, if we have a village manager who truly cares about this community and from everything I've heard, that is a true statement. He does care about this community. If he does, he'd ask the board to rescind the new contract and allow the board to go through the process in a proper, fully transparent way. Because if the talents are truly worthy of being the highest paid village manager in Westchester, there's nothing to worry about. There's nothing to worry. My question has nothing to do with that. I want to find it. There it is. So I watch these meetings regularly. I have two young children, so this is usually bedtime. And anybody with kids knows that is a time you don't really want to give up, but I felt it necessary because I was concerned and confused when I saw. An elected official of this body say, and I want to quote here, don't believe what you read online or what someone says to you. It's rather Orwellian. Uh it's been restated a number of times, so I'd like to know which people in which news organizations were allowed to believe. And is anyone with a contrary opinion ever properly informed, knowledgeable or trustworthy?
I don't know who said that, but. Cause I'm not sure who said it, but because. But is that a question to all of us?
Anyone would like to field it.
I think it is a society, you should take everything that you read or see with a grain of salt, especially the stuff that you see on the internet. Especially the stuff that you see on social media. And if you're not doing that, I don't think you're an informed consumer of information.
I agree, but it would seem that every time there's a contrary opinion. That opinion is always wrong. So it is concerning when a village leader says, don't believe what you read online. Read what someone tells you. I think you know by now that I don't make things up. Basically saying, I am the source of truth. Don't believe anybody else. It's very, very scary and reminiscent of rhetoric we've heard on a national level over the past past few years. And I think we're a better community than.
And I think, I'm just saying, I think it's very, very insulting uh for you to try and equate me with the national leader who just left.
I I.
No, you you are. You are. Let's face it, you are.
You you said, don't believe what you read and don't believe what people tell you.
No, I I.
What I said.
No, that's that's not what I said.
I'm going to quote it exactly.
No, that's not what I said.
It says, he owns property in New Jersey but lives here as a permanent village manager. Don't believe what you read online or what someone tells you. I think you know by now that I don't make things up.
Okay, it doesn't say believe everything I say. Can you see how you 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 didn't do that whole story? You you kind of stopped that up.
Thanks, because I know you're big on context. I see it. I I I read it. You're big on context. All I'm saying.
We should be.
Words do matter and and people recognize the words of the mayor and it's concerning when they make comments basically saying. All journalism that I don't agree with is on.
As a journalist, I find that offensive.
Yeah, oh, good. And 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 that, you know, you're Orwellian, they come on. So, uh, thank you very much.
Uh, excuse me, sir. I would like to answer. I don't know how, I don't know how long you've been living here. And I don't think that it takes some person, like, sorry. I'm not sure, like, this village has a lot of, like, turmoil and just, um. In a sense, everybody likes to take a stab at somebody. It's what they do best, especially in this government. And they've been doing it for years and not even individuals who necessarily have sat in this seat. But people who have been in this community, who have been especially involved politically in this community. So. I would all, what I would do as a resident, because I I'm still a resident and I consider myself a resident above all. Is not necessarily take things by a with a grain of salt, but pay attention and listening to who is speaking. How they're speaking and what, where where's where's the information and where's that message coming from? Because there's a lot of like, I'm going to backstab up to backstab to backstab sometimes. And especially with news uh news outlets, personally, I don't trust anything. Just because of just how how this world has been. And that's my opinion. So you do you you do your own due diligence.
Yep.
But understand the political climate that this community has been in for years. And and the reason why they do the, why they do the things that they do and say to the things that they say. Cause a lot of it, sometimes it's true, sometimes it's not.
Yeah.
So you just, and it works both, it does work both ways. And I said, it's not just the individuals that sit here or sat here in the past. It's also the members of the community. That's why I'm always constantly telling people, check your heart when you send a message out in this community. Because all of this stuff that comes up is going to continue to come up if you don't know how to check yourself. Point blank.
Stuart Teager, um, I'd just like to do a couple of housekeeping items, um, as I reminded board at the last meeting. Two meetings ago, a resident was allowed to speak for twelve minutes. Wrong there, but just you cannot set standards for speech you like. And other standards for speech you don't like. My comment. A little over five minutes. Um, I hope I'll get.
No, you'll you'll be allowed tonight because those people have blatantly broke the rules.
The other point that this can raise is that your procedures say. Speakers can only be interrupted to ask for clarification. So not to heckle them, not to make your points, but here are my comments for tonight. Since the last meeting of this board, the Committee on Open Government told Journal News Reporter. David McKay Wilson that this board unlawfully approved the village manager's million dollar contract in executive session. Please correct that error now to avoid a contract being annulled by a successful Article Seventy Eight petition. Also, at the work session on March thirteenth. The board improperly discussed sport time in executive session. The mayor made a motion citing an exemption that allows discussion of the proposed purchase, sale or lease. Of real property in executive session. But the sport time agreement does not involve the purchase, sale or lease of real property. The agreement clearly references itself as a license. What is so disappointing is that before you met in secret on sport time. I sent you materials showing that an executive session would not be lawful. I sent a New York State Controller's Office opinion stating that a municipality cannot lease. Or sell parkland without going through a complicated alienation process. Which the village hasn't done in the course case of sport time. I also proposed that can provided a committee on open government advisory opinion. Making it clear the exemption did not apply. At the meeting, trustee Lucas asked the village attorney. Whether Mayor Murphy's motion was prop- was a proper exemption to enter executive session. After a twelve second pause, Mistress Pazzino responded that it was proper because it was, quote. Lease of real property, close quote. But in April two thousand nineteen, Mistress Pazzino had provided the board a three page legal memo. Identifying the sport time agreement as a license, not a lease. He opined, quote, an agreement that grants only a temporary personal privilege is a license, close quote. The only current sport time agreement available on the website is for two years. We have not elected this board to do the people's business in private. Please stop violating the law in this way. Under open meetings law, you never need to claim any exemption. And the exemptions are to be narrowly construed. As innumerable advisory opinions state, quote. While the statute authorizes public bodies to conduct executive sessions in circumstances. Described in paragraphs A through H of one oh five one. There is no requirement that an executive session be held. Even though a public body has the right to do so, close quote. It is always a choice that this board makes when it excludes the public, when it does the people's business. We understand from recent news articles that Mayor Murphy does not want to hear from the public. But what about the rest of the board? Taxpayers pay the board to have legal advice at every meeting. Time and time again, this board is getting poor advice on what it must do to comply with open meetings law. Any resident at a meeting where an improper executive session is held. Has standing to bring an open meetings law violation. The court can award attorney's fees when where there is a deliberate violation of open meetings. Law requirements. I would also like to dispel the myth that the discussions in executive session are confidential. They are not. As Committee on Open Government Advisory Opinions applying, quote, since a public body may choose. To conduct an executive session or discuss an issue in public. Information expressed during an executive session is not confidential. Close quote, since the law does not make confidential information expressed in lawful executive sessions. It certainly doesn't for unlawful sessions. If the board wants to collectively be transparent about the sport time discussion. Any in the, if the board doesn't want to be collectively transparent about the sport time discussion. Any individual trustee who wants to be transparent should tell the public what transpired. The board should also be aware that recently, the Committee on Open Government. Has grown more and more concerned about the lack of compliance with open meetings law. And the legislator ha- legislature has increased the penalties for non compliance. Whereas in the past, costs and attorney's fees were discretionary. On the part of the court, they are now required in some cases, like taking unlawful votes. One oh seven two of open meetings law now reads. If a court determines that a vote was taken in material violation of this article. Or that substantial deliber- deliberations relating thereto occurred in private prior to such vote. The court shall. Award costs and reasonable attorney fees to the successful petitioner. Again, transparent government is good government. Please make your default transparency, not opaqueness.
I'll be brief, no speeches. I know in your work sessions, you've been discussing a stormwater fee that's coming up. Um, with the budget. And there might be fees associated for putting a pile of money together. I guess for flood mitigation. Two thousand four, Westchester County did a planning study. And there's something in it, it's called a stormwater utility district. I believe our village, since the recipient, or the recipient of stormwater. From our upstream neighbors. Might be able to form a stormwater utility district. And on the basis of impervious cover. Tax our upstream neighbors, not the residents of this village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I I do you want to address the word?
Yes.
Okay, you're just, well, then I want to address some of the issues that were raised here. Go ahead.
Just checking in because it's been over six months. We haven't gotten any answer. Things we're doing, you're doing the budget beating. I was, we were hoping that the parking lot issue with the paving and the lights. Would be included in that. So going forward.
Just to let you know, uh, last Thursday, the head of DPW went out to measure content of the parking bill for repaving. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, so I I would just like to address, uh. Oh, go ahead, Bob.
Uh, in the past, I've spoken at this podium and requested needed that whoever comes to this podium. They may not say something that you're pleased to hear. You may disagree with them. You may think they're completely wrong. They have a right to to their opinion and they have a right to have your opinion heard without interruption. If you choose to disagree when they're finished, fine, but it's it's so wrong. So wrong for you to interrupt someone while they're speaking. Wait until they're finished. Give them enough opportunity to speak and then say whatever you want to say. That's number one. The second thing I want to talk about, I want to talk about the library. And the first story that came out about the library scared the bejesus out of everybody. Uh, I thought it was inappropriate. Nobody really knows what's going on with the library. They have to do some investigation. We'll we'll find that out. But I I like to know the the source of information that whoever wrote that that story was claiming that. If the world is coming to an end, the library is gonna have to close. It 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 was very disturbing to read that. Uh, we we talked about journalism. I recently read a definition of journalism that somebody here put on next door. I I would hope that everyone had an opportunity to read. The true definition of what journalist, of journalism is. Journalism is somebody give, doing some, finding some information, giving their opinion and writing about it. Whether what they write about is true or if somebody disagrees, that's subject to everyone's interpretation. I just want to emphasize again, somebody comes up here, let them finish, let them say what they have to say. Would you agree, would not agree. People have a right to their opinion when they come up here, communicate it to the whole.
Thank you. You know, there are a lot of things said here tonight. There was a lot of things said. Uh, about our village manager, about his pay scale and about the process. So I'm just gonna address a few of those issues. I've been doing this for twenty something years. Jerry Barberio is the best village manager that this village has ever had. He dealt with the worst flood we ever had in an exemplary fashion. Uh, he helped this village recover, as we could ever have hoped to recover. Uh, in three months, I think most everybody was back into their homes and people being. You know, able to go on with their lives because of how he facilitated that and how hard he worked. Uh, you know. Fourteen hours a day for weeks on end. Uh, he works full time for the Village of America. He has part-time job. You know, there was, there was a provision put in his contract. That we just approved that wasn't in his past contract, uh, to kind of, you know, deal with that. And we will deal with that i- if he takes another part-time job. But I have a part-time job. It's mayor of Village of America. And my my company allows me to do that. A lot of people have more than one job. A lot of people need to have more than one job. Uh, I can tell you this, there's never been a time when I wanted to get in touch with Jerry and I couldn't get in touch with Jerry. There's never been a time when this village, you know, had a situation that needed to be dealt with, that Jerry wasn't there. There's never been a time where, you know, we he had to be at a meeting at night where, you know, if he wasn't sick, he wasn't there. He was there. So, you know what? When I talk about context, there's context. And it's historical context and there's knowing what has happened in this community over the past twenty-five, thirty years. It it's knowing that Jerry reorganized every department in this village. And every department in this village is working more effectively. Uh, leaders in those departments are allowed to make their own decisions now and to use their own impro improvisation. To get things done. And it's been a sea change in how this community works. And if you're really honest with yourself and you've lived here, you can see that. And you can see the 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 fruits of that. So, you know. He might make more than a governor, but you know what? I make more than a lot of people in elected office too in my regular job, but I make nine thousand dollars here. So it isn't about what you make, it's about what you do.
You make less than the governor.
Yeah, yes, I I make exponentially less than the governor. And and believe me, I I. I'm spending thirty hours a week doing this, I'm sure.
But you make more than me.
Uh, we're retired. Uh, so what I'm trying to get at here is that I would make that decision every day and twice on Sundays. You know, we made the right choice, we made the right choice for you because we know that Jerry Barberio has been a great village manager. And you can see it everywhere you go in this community. You can see it in the parks department, you can see it in the rec department, you can see it in DPW. You can see it as you walk down the street on American Avenue during the holidays and how, you know, the the. The the pride of America shows. So, you know, it it's easy to cherry pick things. And it's easy to pick things up and it's easy to make assumptions about budgets and about recessions, you know. We we I've been here, we're going into a recession for the past three years and still we're not in a recession. Uh, you know, I and I can't believe that, you know, it's a problem. The property taxes are a a lower percentage of the total revenue that we're taking in. It's your property taxes. You know, fees are paid by people in the community and outside the community. And you, we're we're very sure of those, uh. Figures Jerry and Augie have been doing this for decades and decades and they've never let this community down. Why did I think that they let them down this year? You know, what what changed? I'll tell you what changed. There's a change of the board. And that change was not. And that change was not endorsed by a lot of people in this community. And a lot of people worked hard in this community to keep these folks from being on this board. And now that they're on this board, they want to second guess everything that they do. In in January twenty twenty-two, Jerry's contract was approved in executive session. And. Jerry's contract was approved in executive session in January twenty twenty-two. And. What is that saying? So.
Say everybody.
First of all, you definitely cannot talk from your ears. You know, please, you don't interrupt. There, there has been, you know, concerted effort to throw roadblocks in front of this board since the board changed. But the board's making a lot of progress. Tonight in work session, we went through a whole agenda. That's something that never happened with the old board. Things languished on the agenda for months and months and months. Now things are getting done. There's there's substantial progress. Later on in this meeting, there's gonna be a a vote. To, you know, really move affordable housing forward in this community. This is the stuff that elections are about. You know, it 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 isn't about all process and procedure, it's about getting a job done. And this board, since I became mayor, has been more transparent than any board in history for the first time. In the history of Village of America, work sessions are televised. No community around us televises their work session. No community around us. So you can see literally how the sausage is made. So, you know. You might disagree with how something happened, but to to characterize it as, you know, nefarious, to characterize it as Orwellian. It it is just absurd. Now, I want to ask Mr. Village Attorney Bob Spalzino. Mrs. Spalzino, the vote we took in executive session. What is your opinion of that vote?
My opinion is it does not violate the open meetings law.
And why is that?
Because the open meetings law speaks very specifically about the old litigation. On votes in executive session being with regard to appropriations. Appropriation is a term of art. It means the authorizing of spending, not the entry into a contract. The board went through this whole discussion a year or so ago. When trustee to for trustee Lucas and others argued that. The board could not spend money improving bills for which money had not been appropriated in the budget, being the budget. Figure was not enough to cover it. That's what appropriation means. Does not mean the entry into the contract. That's why, in my opinion, the, uh. Open meetings law does not prohibit voting on a contract in executive session. Where the contract is authorized to be discussed in executive session, which a contract. That involves the qualifications and and the personal sort of, I forget the exact words are, of an individual discussed. So it was not inappropriate regardless of what somebody in the Committee on Open Government says. And the Committee on Open Government is not a, it's an advisory body, that's all. They may disagree, they may have their own opinion. My opinion, I'll be wrong.
Thank you. Mr. Tippett.
Good evening, Glenn Tippett, five oh six Hill Street. I would first like to end a disparaging rumor about Jerry Barbero, our village manager. He does not indeed have a voodoo doubt of me in his office that he's been putting pins in since last December. I don't know how that rumor got started, but I want to end that rumor right now. Okay, Jerry?
I'll get rid of it.
We're good. When when you talk about what what a reporter is. Well, King George the Third might not have liked what the Addams Brothers, uh, wrote, what Hamilton wrote. Or, um, the founding fathers, because what, they were journalists. The way our constitution is written, anybody can be a citizen journalist. Taking one opinion, I think is foolish. I read a lot of different opinions online. I straightened out a lot of people. Online when their opinion is wrong with facts, whether it backs you or doesn't back you up. American Observer, I have read the American Observer since it's come out. I don't find it to be particularly leaning one way or the other. A lot of the articles have been very, very neutral.
I disagree, but go ahead.
But again, that's, you would disagree, I would disagree about maybe, uh. Uh, low luck. Some of their articles, but guess what? Read both of them, then do a little research on your own and then you come up with the facts. Um, flood mitigation. George Latimer basically came before the Budget Committee and it also, uh, before this, um. These trustees, a few times this has told you. That he will help all he can with flood mitigation. And quite frankly, that means water retention. In White Plains, in Valhalla, in Scarsdale, they have a lot of golf courses, they have a lot of, uh. Woods, Saxon Woods and such. They should be building, retaining. Lakes and reservoirs on all these properties coming down. With the ability to drain the lakes forward when you're gonna have a rain event. It's not simply keeping the water over in Saxon Woods, uh, reservoir. It's keeping the water up in White Plains. It's keeping the water in Scarsdale. Uh, Ridgeway, where they're building a hundred and sixty houses, you had two golf courses across the street from each other. You could have easily, as part of the planning. Put a nice big lake. On that property because water runs all the way through that property. Water runs through Maplewood, um, comes right down, comes to Saxon Woods, comes into the Village of American. Also on flood mitigation, and I have asked this for almost two years now. This board should allow anybody who wishes to raise their house fifteen feet under the flood, out of uh above, uh, out of the flood plain. The ability to regain that fifteen feet against height restrictions. You build your, you you're gonna lose your basement, you're gonna lose your first floor, you shouldn't have to have a one-family ranch house. Fifteen feet in the year in order to get out of the flood. If, uh, the height restriction is forty feet, it should be fifty-five feet. You 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 have to raise your house. Underneath your house has to be half an period, uh, pervious surface. And if you lower your house, you lose that exemption. Very simple, and you go for anything, it doesn't matter if it's an apartment building, doesn't matter, single family house. Number one, you increase pervious surface. Number two, you increase parking. Number three, you help, uh, people who have the insurance problems, maybe it's cheaper. To turn around and build out of the flood plain than to pay the insurance rates that people are paying. When the budget comes up, I will speak on it, but just to to opine about one thing. Jerry came in with a budget. He made a presentation. He said that we were with like nine point six percent originally and. There was back and forth with it, uh, who said maybe we have to go over the cap this year. You, as the mayor, were insistent we should come in under the cap. Not you, Lou, I'm talking about Mr. Mayor Murphy. You actually said that it might be the year to go over the cap.
No, 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 the other way around.
Oh, well, either or, but the bottom line is, well, now that now Jerry came in with a budget that's underneath. The, um, spending cap. That doesn't mean it's a healthy budget. There's a lot of things in that budget that don't add up. And once we start to discuss the budget, I will be happy to go line by line. Cause I went through the budget. The other thing is you have four or five positions. That they're looking to hire that aren't even in the budget that they want to put in mid-year. And we're not done giving everybody raises yet. We've given certain people in the village raises yet. We have a lot of long-term employees who have worked their ass off in this village. Who who also are are gonna be up for raises. They're up for raises every year. We we we, I, you'll have a list of maybe ten people that got raises. Well, eventually, everybody else is gonna get raises too. And it's quite frankly, we have a good managing personnel. They gotta be paid comfortably to other people. You're gonna give. People here for twenty-five years a three point five percent raise with somebody here for ten minutes a seventeen percent raise. So I will speak at that one, we'll speak on the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you may.
Okay, I I did a couple of things I I just want to say, um, forty-three years in journalism. And and this government is about as open as they get because, uh. I don't know if people realize it, but these these sessions at the beginning of the, uh, of the, of the, uh, meeting and later on. They're not required by state law, they're completely optional. And I've never seen. Uh, a a board that had two in the same meeting. I was, I was, I was surprised by it, but this, this, this village does that. And it, uh, and it is a testament to the openness of, uh, of the village. The same thing with the with the televising of the work sessions. Work sessions are usually the back room where everything gets done. And then the, and then then the main session is where it's a pro forma vote. And that's usually traditionally how local governments, uh, behave. Not in this government. They 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 televise everything and we don't even really vote in in the, uh, in in work session.
We have a vote.
Um, uh, and and I can tell you, nothing substantial happens in 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 the. Executive session and, uh, uh, and this this contract, we could have voted for it publicly or or behind closed. So the vote would have been the same. You knew about it immediately. There was nothing hidden. There was no backroom deal. Uh, Jerry got the money he got because there are certain things you don't shop for bargains are on. You don't shop for a bargain surgeon, you don't shop for a bargain attorney, you don't shop for a bargain CEO for to run your, uh, a multimillion dollar government. Uh, and if you want to find out what bargains get you, go across the street to the library and check with them. All right, that's what happens. All right, so, um. That that's that's then that's that's the puts the lie to all this. Uh, as far as, um. Uh, journalism goes, uh, uh, the one thing that that any story, any alleged. Act of journalism doesn't survive is a fact error. Fact errors are fatal if they're central to your, uh, if you're central to your thesis. And the idea that he's a part-timer is a factor, a factor. And the idea that he's a part timer is a factor, a factor, the whole story is dead. All right, I'm done.
Move on to the agenda. Tonight, we have one, two, three, four, five, five public hearings. You need a break?
Nah, keep going.
We we're going to take, we're going to adjourn for five minutes, so a lot, no, other people have to go. To allow people a chance to.
Don't pull the D and D off slow, move it off fast.
Something else.
You know something about journalism? You know something about journalism?
So Bernie, it's the county's slate, since your DA's.
No, he said the. Board ticket seats, please.
You know what this is? Is this like the vehicle?
Yeah.
They're all at the bar.
Good evening. Good evening, or this water is going to kill you. We're going to do. Public hearings. Now, the first public hearing is PLG, Local Law to Exceed Property Tax Cap for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And your motion to open this public hearing.
Second.
Ollie Paul.
He's rolling.
Yes.
Guys, a read?
Yes.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, what this is, is it's it's a law that would allow you to exceed the tax cap. In New York State, you have to pass a law if you're going to exceed the tax cap. As many of you know, the tax proposed rate is one point one six percent, which is well under the tax cap. Although I I assume folks would like to see it higher, but I don't think that's a good, good way of doing things. So. If if there's no comment, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this to April twenty-fourth.
Ollie Paul.
Trustee, he's rolling.
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Mayor. You really should make a call to the audience.
You're out of order, sir. If you want to say something, say something, but but don't calm down your tone, please.
Okay. Here's my question. First of all, I do hope you'll make a call to the audience and just not say if there are no objections, let's do this and be done with it. My question is about the tax gap. Tax cap is only for the budget approved, correct? Is my understanding is that we are well over spending on the budget we approved for last year. Through a series of amendments and. Other appropriations. Is that correct?
Oh, is that correct?
If I understand the questions, basically saying that through the use of appropriations. And transfers, we've exceeded the approved adopted budget from fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah.
That would be correct.
By how much?
So. Five point eight. Okay, my only point is, is that presidents should understand that just because a budget is approved doesn't mean that. We won't spend millions of dollars more than that.
If we have to.
I I would say, you know, a bunch of the stuff that you approved. I believe and added to the budget last year was in June. Same month the budget started, so I would hope this year, same thing isn't going to happen. That we're not going to be three or four million dollars over. What we approve to stay under the tax cap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing on P L A partial property tax. No, you know what we're going to do? We're going to go out of order because there's. Young folks in the audience, and I want to, you know, get them home so they can go to bed for school in the morning. And they are here for the affordable housing aspects of this. And so we'll start with. One C. Public hearing on P L one twenty twenty-three to amend a village code to include requirements for fair and affordable housing for all zones. I'd like a motion open to me?
So moved.
Second.
Open the hearing, so moved.
Trustees, Rollins?
Yes.
Guys, a read?
Yeah.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Bob, can you explain us a bit? P L C.
This doesn't is. Expand the requirements for affordable housing throughout the village, so multi-family development throughout the village. Now it's just limited to one area. It would be any multi-family development throughout the village would have to meet the standards for affordable housing.
So it wouldn't affect single family zones?
Correct.
Okay, because that was a question I got today.
That's right.
So if you had, if you lived in R five or R ten, a developer couldn't come in, knock down the house and build an apartment.
Wouldn't change the permissible uses.
Right, so if that was not a permissible use, it would still not be a permissible use.
Correct.
Because I got that question second.
That initially my request had been that if there was going to be like a five unit housing development, that that also affected, that was what I had asked for, but that didn't get into the law.
Okay. Any questions from the board, concerns? Are you some new audience? Yeah.
Mayor, I can give him a mic if you.
Yeah, give him a mic.
This is dangerous, I'm against it, but I'll do it.
Just going to take it home with him.
Yeah, you're talking about. Of making it that if somebody wants to build multi-units in a, anywhere in the village, that they would have to. They would have to follow the multi-welling law. But we also have a set of rules in the village that doesn't allow any development in parts of the village, including Boston Post Road. If you go on on the Boston Post Road. Where like the the pizzeria is and that set of stores up there, you have limited them to only putting one story above them, which economically. Isn't feasible. Where maybe if they had two stories they could put above there, they might be able to put in. Two or three micro apartments and two regular apartments and have a five unit where one or two of the units is affordable. There's other parts of the Boston Post Road, there's other parts of the code where between setback height restriction. Parking regulation and density. It doesn't, it doesn't matter, you know, what the law says, nothing is ever going to be built there. Since since you have passed the law, we have maybe three or projects in the entire village. The name on one hand, maybe added five units. To the entire village of affordable housing. In the meantime, you have gentification going on. In the down down in Washingtonville. Where people are coming in, they're they're buying two family homes, they're spending a ton on them, then a current tenant is asked to leave. They fix up the home and then they rate, then they double the rents. So while people are going out. Because, you know, the the homes are so valuable down there in Washingtonville, gentification is taking place.
Gentification.
And 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 it and it's not black and white, it's poor, middle class replaced by middle class wealthier. It's all about the green. Well, if there's other places you can't build, if I can't build anything on Boston Post Road as right where the way the law is written now. What difference does it make if you have multifamily unit laws for for areas of the village that. You know, are are blocked through through other other housing laws?
So to answer that last part of your question or statement, we are working with the. Coalition for Affordable Housing to adjust those laws so that when people do develop new property in this community. It needs to be affordable so that people are not moving out because they can't afford to live here. So that we're trying to address that.
What I'm what I'm saying, there's properties that right now. That. Doesn't doesn't matter, doesn't matter affordable, non-affordable, they simply can't be developed.
And you asked me, you're talking about on.
Whether it's more height or or something else. You you you're only going to have. you, you, you're only gonna have a, a quote, affordable housing in one or two sections of the village, the rest of it? Except.
Is that what you're talking about on Boston Post Road?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, okay.
On Boston Post Road, they changed, uh, the law years ago because they were worried about development cuz they were getting high-priced apartments. So, uh, like that set of stores where Modern Pizza is and, and, and that set over there, they can only go one story higher. That's a law that you guys put in. They can only go to a second store. They can't go to three, to, 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 to three stories where if you go to three stories, maybe you can put affordable housing units in there. And there's other parts of the Boston Post Road that, you know, which is not gonna have development.
You, you, what you're saying.
If you're gonna look at affordable housing, you have to look at the restrictions on development overall in order to make more areas of the village open to development, then it will be open for affordable.
Thank you. And what you're saying makes sense, uh, but that'd be the subject of another law.
And I think he's saying it's more, more feel-good than practice.
Well, it, it, it's, it's a side, you know, the road to, uh, the longest road starts with the first step. Thank you, Leonard. Uh, any other questions, concerns, comments?
Seamus, that's, um, Mallory did.
No, no, you, you let him keep that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be speaking again.
Go ahead, Seamus.
Go ahead, Seamus, yeah.
Mayor, board, thank you. Um, my name's Seamus Horarczyk of the five twenty-five North Wagner House, uh, I'm the chair of the planning board, but I'm here speaking for myself. Um, my understanding that it is that what's proposed is an expansion of affordable housing, and so I'm here just to voice my support for that. Um, I think that more affordable housing in the Marineric is essential to its character. I think it's one of the most impactful things that we can do for the people who need it the most. Um, I understand that there are likely concerns, um, about unintended consequences uh, and effectiveness, and so those are good, those should be taken seriously and we should do the best that we can. But we should do something now, more later, um, and I just wanted to say that I think that this, uh, it's great to see this on the agenda. I hope that there's more to come from this, and I wanna thank Drandy and, um, the CRC who does a great job here of letting you know this was gonna be on the agenda tonight, uh, to invite me to come down, um, I'll support it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lily Short and I live on Animal, one, two, Animal, and, um, thank you to this board for moving this forward and really putting it as a priority in our village and in our community. Um, and it was one of the main reasons why we canvassed so hard last year to make sure this happened, and, um, thank you to Drandy for all the work she does on the committee and making us more aware about the needs and the needs for equity in this community, and that's why, another reason why we changed our board to get more equity. And I too support, um, affordable housing. I really support the area you're going to have it because it's in my neighborhood. And I live in a building of eighty units and we have a very diverse community, and I love my building. We don't have, you know, we're just like this really interesting community of different people. And, um, I know people in my neighborhood very well, as Tom does, because Tom was a resident in our neighborhood too. And we are very, most of us are very progressive and we really will, um, be happy with the affordable housing going in our neighborhood. Many of the families that have moved to this area um, in the last few years, um, were very happy about the board we were, um, you know, getting in last year. I know there's obviously a lot of people who aren't happy, but there's a lot of people who are very, very happy. And Jerry, just on a side note, everyone wants to know about the fobs. I'm stopped every day with excitement about this fabulous dog park that you're building. And they want to know where they get the fobs. It's like the new in thing in the village, where's the fobs? Thank you, everyone, for all the hard work you're doing, and it's, it's really sad to see, um, the anger that's going on in this community, but you know what? As I've always learned, you stick to the winners. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alina Tugan, I live at four twelve Monroe in the village. Can I ask you a question about this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so I just wanna understand, um, cuz I didn't quite understand what you were saying when it says it's affordable housing for all zones in the village, except those that, that's not.
All zones where multi-family housing is permitted.
Okay, so, and that's not how it is now.
That's not how it is now.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm, I'm just wanted to, to echo what they both said, the previous speakers, um, we know a lot's been written about poverty now, and one of the chief issues to try to alleviate in some ways promoting affordable housing. That's the only way some of these issues will begin to be addressed, and we don't do it in the Marineric. We can't complain about anything else that's happening in this country, so I think it's really a step in the right direction and it's necessary, it's a really necessary thing and that people understand why it's needed. People will always be against something they're afraid of in their own community, but if we don't do it here, you know, where are we gonna do it? So thanks very much.
Thank you. And Drandy?
Good evening, thank you, uh, Gina Martinez with one thirty-four Central Avenue. Uh, and I'd just like to thank you all for coming and for staying, uh, and this is a, a coalition, uh, effort, so the Marineric Affordable, the Marineric Coalition for Affordable Housing includes a lot of different communities, organizations, residents, uh, and anything that had, that I just, the reality is that people need to live here, but in order to live here, they need to be able to afford to live here. And people do work multiple jobs because we can't live here, um, and so when I stand for affordable housing alongside our community partners, it's actually not even really benefiting my direction. We don't follow that. But we have to start somewhere, and this is a good place to start. Um, and, and I agree, you know, let's like expand it to other zones, um, and we'll get there. But let's start here, and thank you for considering this, for bringing it forward. Um, I think we have to work collectively as, as a community in order to keep meeting the wonderful community that we are. Uh, so that's what I want to say on behalf of myself and, and the community-based organization that I work with. Um, uh, but this is a collective effort, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Stark, so wonderful, come on quick. This will be very quick. I've had my disagreements with a number of things, I just wanna say I, I'm a percent support of affordable housing. I think it's something, uh, long overdue and whatever it takes to get that effectively. So partly supporting.
Lord, thank you, Mr. Stark.
Stuart Dinger, and I agree with everything that's been said. Um, my question is, could this law be rewritten to include sections that have been spoken out? I mean, I know laws can only deal with one issue, but it seems like it's all the same issue. We know how hard it is to get laws up and passed, so. Is that possible, do you think?
Well, I, I, I would rather pass this law tonight and actually make some progress, but, but, uh, part of the problem that Mr. Tippett, uh, so eloquently exposed happened during the course of doing P L C a few years back. Uh, when I proposed that, I just wanted to do a floor area ratio reduction, but the board morphed it and complicated it into many other things, and it had unforeseen consequences, uh, like the fifty-foot setback, like what Mr. Tippett has just pointed out. So I think it's better to take things one at a time straightforward, to try and, you know, do an omnibus bill of all zoning, and then you don't see the complications that you should have saw when you were just dealing with one at a time, so.
Okay, no, that's certainly a way to look at it, but I hope then you'll just take it up in the next work session to add in all the other zones, um, that where it can be done, thank you.
So I answered, the, the, the properties that were modified in the moratorium, um, what, one of the, one of the, subsequent to the moratorium, one of the concerns was that all we were getting was luxury housing, and so we made a requirement, a very minimum requirement in those areas that we would have one unit of affordable housing, um, for every five units essentially that was built, and I, I'm gonna say the affordable unit is at eighty percent of the AMI, which is the adjusted median income. For a family of four in the Marineric, we're in Westchester, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars income, so I mean that, that's to Drandy's point. A hundred and ten thousand dollars is a substantial income. So that's, that's, that's who qualifies for eighty percent AMI. Um, and so, you know, in order to get more affordable housing, we're gonna have to figure out creative ways of having partnering with developers to get grants and loans so that the AMI can be at a lower, at a lower rate. I mean, that's the, that's the key to keeping our area diverse and, you know, we created a TOD zone before any of us were on the board, and the unintended consequence of that is that an apartment building that was not expensive to live in was demolished and, and instead we have a shopping center. So, um, there, you know, we don't always get it right and, um, but I think we have to work, I think the next public hearing we're gonna talk about, the next public hearing we have, have is we're on a path to create an affordable building on property that we own, which is the biggest, you know, stumbling block property the village owns, so, um, I had hoped that this law, I mean, when I proposed this law, I, which I proposed in twenty-twenty, I, um, I was. Those what, this law, the law we're adopting tonight, I first proposed it in November of twenty-twenty, and I, um, I had hoped it would also include single-family zones so that in the event, I haven't, you know, I live in a neighborhood with a lot of not such big houses on huge lots, you could tear down a few of them and come up with five units, maybe one of them could be affordable. That didn't get in this iteration, I, I still think that might be a good idea, so, um, this is, I think this is better than nothing, it's not as, it's not, but it's, we should do it tonight and keep working.
I, I, I don't, I don't think I'm in favor of, uh, multi-family dwellings and single-family.
I'm not saying that, Tom, I'm saying if you, it's, I'm not at all suggesting that, that's not what I suggested.
That's what you said about in your area.
If you build five houses, one of them has to be affordable, but I'm not suggesting you build multi-family houses in the middle family zone, that's not what I propose.
So it's similar to what I brought up again, um, and what I asked the, for, um, the coalition to do?
Were you, I mean, you're interested in having us adopt a lower AMI?
Yes.
Which.
Will make sure so that we don't necessarily, when things do come up in this community, is not just at eighty percent.
But I, I, I think that's a separate issue. I'm, uh, my proposal was that if we create single-family complex or single family development of five or more units, that the same rules apply and one of them be affordable. That didn't get into this iteration, maybe it will in the future.
Okay, um.
Maybe you can go into a little.
Let's just. Maybe it's new audience? No, okay, uh, I'm also obviously in support of this. I grew up in affordable housing. Um, I lived there until I was twenty-nine years old. It wasn't, uh, public housing, it was affordable housing, uh, like Washington, the housing alliance builds, and some of our good, good nonprofit developers in this community have built over the years. Uh, and for my family, it was transformative, uh, it was, uh, solid, uh, and clean and safe, and it allowed us to, uh, live in the middle of the city and stay in the area where my grandmothers and my aunts and my uncles and my cousins all work, and it really allowed for a sense of community. And, uh, that sense, uh, has since passed in that area because of gentrification. Uh, you couldn't afford to live in the area that I grew up when, unless you were making seven figures. Uh, you know, my joke is, you hear my joke? Anyplace I, anyplace I move out of gets gentrified. By, by the fact that I moved out of it.
The Marineric joke is, if you leave the Marineric and you come back, you know, made it.
That's right.
Well, then I am a product. But I'm still not making it.
Um.
Baby steps.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are you leaving your current, uh, um, residence anytime within the next two years?
No, I, you know, I, I.
I wanna invest.
I, I, I. There's some people that might pay me. But I've seen tonight, uh, Mr. Mr. Attorney, uh, I don't see a secret determination in this folder.
That's true, I mean, there was so many for the secret, uh, documents.
So can we, can we not? Can we, can we vote on this tonight?
Close the public hearing.
We have to wait for the secret.
Wait for the secret doctors. Okay. So we're gonna close the public hearing, you know, I, I think you can see that there's a vast consensus on this board to pass this. Uh, and that'll happen hopefully at the next meeting, you know, unless there's a, a vast change in the board between that period, which I don't, I don't think's gonna happen. So I thank you all for coming out, especially youngsters, I really appreciate it. And thank you for taking the time to care about your community, to care about your government, to care about people who need a hand. And it speaks well of you. And I hope you keep this going as you progress through life. This, that really is what success is. Success is what you do for other people, not, you know, which house you have, which car you drive. At least that's what I keep telling myself, I'm broke. So I need a motion to close this public hearing.
I'm all second.
All roll.
Trustee, he's rolling?
Yes.
You guys a read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, the, the next, uh, then, there's one more you might wanna stay for, the, the, because this is kind of the, uh, the main event. Uh, the next is an adoption of revised zoning map. So let me tell you what's going on here. Uh, first, well, first, let's have a motion to open a public hearing, and the public hearing is on P L L K, adoption of revised zoning map. You need a motion?
Second.
Ollie, please.
Christie's rolling?
Yes.
You guys a read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, okay. So what this is, across the street is a structure called the Hunter Lot. It's a, it's a parking lot, it was built in the late eighties, soon started to decay by the late nineties, we've been patching it up and trying to fix it, uh, and keep it operational, there, there are some parts of it that are very badly deteriorated. But that parcel is zoned R five, R five is the lowest density zone, you could, you could build a, a one house on that parcel. The village owns it outright. But it butts on this side, C two property, uh, commercial two zone. Commercial two zone, the infill housing provision of the commercial zone is our densest allowable housing option. So the idea is we redraw the zoning map to include the Hunter Lot. And that becomes zone C two. Then the village, since it still owns the property, sends out an R F P, a request for proposal, for developers to build an all affordable development. That means it, it won't be, you know, market rate, it won't be, uh, you know, uh, for profit. And, and hopefully, as they were talking about AMI, uh, that's a annual intermediate, it's, AMI is annual median income.
Exactly.
Yeah, we need. So you can go from eighty percent to sixty percent to thirty percent, you can have a mixed, you know, uh, income building with people, you know, with the, the real starting out in life, making thirty thousand dollars, people making fifty thousand dollars, people making seventy thousand dollars. So that families who are just starting out, young people who are just starting out, people who built this community, uh, who grew up here, uh, who are retired and on fixed income, will hopefully be able to remain here. And, you know, hopefully there'll be forty or fifty units built in that spot. And that's a major change, and if you look at the law that Governor Hope was trying to propose about housing uh, in communities like ours, uh, if that law passes, or some, uh, version of that law passes, the biggest benefit that a community gets is to build all affordable units. You get like it, under her plan, you get a two-for-one. So if you build fifty units, it counts for a hundred. So if this community would have to build three hundred units, by building those fifties, you're thirty-three percent along the way. Now, I'm not, let's not get into that law, but as I, as I started out by saying at the. Now, I'm not, let's not get into that law, but as I, as I started out by saying at the last, uh, hearing. You know, affordable housing is literally life-changing to families. You know, if you're paying more than thirty percent of your income for housing, that's after taxing. If you, if you're paying more than thirty, no, it's gross, it's before taxing. If you're paying more than thirty percent of your income and you have a flat tire. Your kid, uh, has a hospital bill that you have to pay. It's catastrophic. You might lose your home. You know, the, the, the biggest cause of homelessness and bankruptcy in this country is medical bills. Which we can't fix, right? You know, I wish we could. But, you know, if, if people are in an affordable unit, you know, they have a chance at least that meeting these needs, meeting these costs, and as inflation goes up. They have, you know, an opportunity to stay in this community, to go, to send their kids to good schools. And to give them a chance to move up the economic ladder, because, you know. You, you, all outcomes aren't going to be, and that's unfortunate, but everybody should have a chance at least at success. And if you don't have decent housing, you're not going to have a chance at success. It's just, it, it, it gives you another, you know, brick that you have to carry up those stairs. So I'm very much in favor of doing this. Uh, it, it's, it's a very bold move. Uh, for a community like ours to build this much affordable housing. Uh, in, in not, we're not going to build it ourselves. We'll have a competent, uh, builder do it. But, you know, it, it's, we, we talk a lot about. How diverse we are, both economically and ethnically. But that's not going to remain if we don't take tangible steps to make sure that that happens. And this is a tangible step, and it's, you know, on the road and it, it's not going to, uh. It's, it's not going to fix all our problems, you know. Somebody was talking before about, you know, people moving out of the community, about taxes, but this community has grown and grown and grown. Uh, if you look, you know, three million dollar houses, two million dollar houses, one million dollar houses, they're, they're being sold in a weekend. So people want to move here. So there's always going to be that pressure on housing prices, uh, that working families aren't going to be able to stay here. Uh, I, I would not be able to buy in the situation that I was in when I bought a house in nineteen ninety-three or ninety-four. I would not have the ability to get into the market.
Not here.
No, not here, but back then it was before things went absolutely insane.
You're like eight hundred thousand?
Okay. My first house was two hundred, my first house was two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, and, and it went down and go for like about eighty.
All right, let's not count other people's money. Uh, so I'm very much in favor of this, like I said, I grew up in a situation like that. It allowed my parents to, you know, send my brothers and I to college because they could save money. And it allowed us as a family to take a step forward. But, you know, in, in America, families are either rising or falling, so we got to help people rise. So that's how I feel about this. But anybody else on the board before we go to public?
No, this is, this is why we're here.
Yes, this is why we're here. Well put. Anybody else? On the board? Nope. I'm going to public.
Obviously I'm for this because I actually proposed it to the board over two years ago, uh, in a, uh. Email that I sent to him, that Jerry responded, uh, with his thoughts on both the village wall and the housing. The one on the housing village wall we're still, uh, working on.
Glenn, we all call it the Tippett plan.
Yes. The, um, uh, to, to speak, uh, right now you're talking about forty to sixty units. You might want to turn around. As incentive, maybe you give an extra couple of floors if you can get that forty percent rate. And put in some studio, mini apartments for either, uh, first, uh, first time renters or, uh, seniors who are looking to stay in the community. Giving it a little bit more height and being able to add those, uh, some, uh. Uh, uh, mini apartments or studio apartments that would suit that single person. Uh, could, could help. The other thing is, as the town of America does. You're going to have to put in a means test because what you don't want is to rent the apartment. And five years later have somebody make it a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but I don't want to give up the very inexpensive apartment. In M'Barney, I know the units that they have in the town of M'Barney, they've got fifty-one units. I'm not sure if it's on a, on a two-year basis or whatever, but what they do is they continue to check income and if, if you happen to make it. Unfortunately, they, uh, they will have a plan for you to, uh, lead with assistance and then bring in somebody else who is. More needy of that unit at that time.
Yep, thank you.
Very short from, um. I just wanted to say, um. I read that the job, the, the fifteen hours that Jerry does. Over the bridge in New Jersey is helping a community who has been told to do affordable housing. And that he, because of his skills and everything, he's actually, which I think is really good. Um, and I presume that's why the board allows for his extra job. Um, well, one of the reasons that, um, I think it's really good because it's going to be really helpful for us, even though it's New Jersey. I think things will be quite similar and it shows another reason why we must, well, we are keeping Jerry, but of course we can't be Jerry. You know, he's part of the craziness around here. And, um, and we're all crazy, just on different day. So I really, um, and also that article didn't say you work part-time because. I know David really well, and it was a really well-written article in a lot of ways. And he said that when you picked up the phone and spoke to him, he'd already done forty-seven hours that week. And so I don't know why a forty-seven hour week. Why Amy, who doesn't have a job, thinks it's a part-time job? No, it is true. She doesn't have a job and many, I have five jobs. Do you know what I mean? To, to afford to live here. And good for you, Jerry. So I'm looking forward to your expertise. Because you are, that's what your fifteen hours is, and nobody's said that tonight, and I think it's a really important component. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Jerry, after eleven o'clock, and I get that.
It's Glenn, please don't, Glenn, 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 please don't yell out.
I think that changing the zoning on Hunter Lot is, oh, sorry, I'm Geranti Martinez, but one thirty-four zone. Uh, I think changing the zoning on Hunter Lot is actually a really good use of that space. Um, as, as, I forgot, I guess Nora, when we tore down that building to build commercial buildings. A commercial storefront, we should be replacing every unit in that. And, and make it affordable. So I, I think, thank you for bringing that up, then we should make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Awesome.
Okay, uh, in a motion to close the hearing.
No, we can't.
No, yeah, we'll go back to, yeah, we'll come back to fire. That's the meeting.
Or close the meeting.
Why can't I close the year?
Because we're referring it to H C Z M. That's what the.
Yeah, I can close the hearing and refer to.
I think we need to wait for their comments.
You can't act, you can still close the year.
Yeah.
But I, I checked on this before.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would think we would wait for their comments to hold, to, to, okay, I mean, I, I think we should wait for their comments.
I, I, I think that ultimately we give consistency determination. They, they advise us. We can wait for their comments before we vote to enact the law. And make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Call roll.
Rusty is rolling?
Yes.
You guys are read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
No, I think we shouldn't close it yet. And I, I, I just think we shouldn't close it. I also think that there are people who are here for this hearing and they got discouraged and left, oh, and so.
Well, they have an opportunity to cover.
Yep.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, uh, just what's going on, uh, this has to be referred to Harbor Coast Zone Management Commission. For an, an opinion on determination of consistency with the local waterfront revitalization plan. That, uh, should take thirty days.
They can do it sooner, but you have to give them thirty days.
You have to give them thirty days, and if in thirty days they haven't done it, we'll, we'll make the determination as a board. Anyway, it's, it's just an opinion that they offer, advisory opinion. Uh, so like before, uh, this will be voted on and I'm sure passed. Uh, but we have to wait for a procedural hurdle first be jumped. So I think, you know, you can come back in a month or you could just take my word, it's going to pass.
But I don't think we should call it a procedural hurdle because it's actually environmental review and.
So it's a procedural hurdle.
I think in.
It's not secret. It's good consistency determination.
But it's, it's one of the ways we protect our environment in the village of M'Baroneck, and I don't think, I don't think calling. I don't think calling a consistency review by the Harbor and Coast Zone Management Com- Commission, a procedural hurdle. It's part of our environmental review process, and I think we all take environmental review seriously.
And I don't think on a procedural hurdle is, is getting the seriousness of the situation. It's just, you, a, a, a term for what we have to do. But thank you. Uh, again. We're going to go back to one B. Partial property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not Hill.
Well, it's not done yet. I've got another one attendant. Sorry.
Yeah, have a little help. I need a motion to open up P L L A.
Second.
Thank you. Call roll.
Rusty is rolling?
Yes.
You guys are read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Hi. Okay, what this is, is, uh, thank you, Lena. Bye-bye. Thank you, Jenny. Uh, what this is, is, uh. For people who are firefighters or volunteer ambulance workers, and we have an all-volunteer, uh, fire department. It allows a ten percent exemption on their assessed value of their property. So i- if their property is, is assessed at, uh, a million dollars. Uh, it is then, you know, if, if they're qualified and it is, is assessed at nine hundred thousand and then taxed upon the nine hundred instead of the million that it would have been. So, you know, it's a ten percent savings on their property taxes, uh, and. It just, just their village property taxes, you know, it doesn't affect the town and it doesn't affect, uh, the, uh, school district. But, you know, for the folks who volunteer in this community and who spend countless hours and, you know. Walk into very, very dangerous and very tense situations for free. This is an incentive to A, keep them in the community. And B, reward them for the dangerous work that they do on a regular basis. And, uh, if you've ever been involved in a fire, uh, in this community, and I have, and, uh, you know. You, you, eleven o'clock at night, uh, four trucks pull up and, you know, uh. Thirty-five, forty firefighters who are all volunteers jump off. And you, you, you stop for a minute, you realize that they all just left their homes, they all just left their beds, they all just left their families to come help you. Uh, it's, it's very humbling and, uh. It gets harder and harder to get volunteers because people move from areas that where they're not used to the tradition. Of volunteerism that we have here and, uh. They're, they're, they're not going to, uh, become involved in that. So the men and women that we have doing it, we want to keep them doing, we want to keep them in the community because as I've seen over the years. Uh, especially some of the younger folk, as they get married and want to have kids, they got to move up the line. So they're up in Putnam County, or they're up, you know, across the Hudson River. And, you know, that doesn't, you know, that you can't be an effective firefighter if you're an hour and a half from the fire, right? So this is, you know, a little bit of a thank you and a little bit of an encouragement to keep the, these folks in the community. So that's what we're doing here, and this proposal. Any questions or concerns from the board or comments?
No.
I have one question. If this would, I don't think it does, if this could or. Buy to, uh, people who served and are still living in the community, but don't, or maybe retired now.
I think you have to be enacted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can hear the question. About former, about retired, uh, emergency workers. There are a series of requirements in here to qualify, all of which are drawn directly from state authorization. So if it's not in here. You can't qualify.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns from the community? Need a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Cool.
Rusty is rolling?
Yes.
Guys are read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Thank you all. I need a motion to adopt the law.
The most.
Augustina.
Rusty is rolling?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Next up is, uh. Tentative budget, uh, item one E, public hearing on twenty-three, twenty-four tentative budget. Uh, Jerry, have a, uh.
Summary?
Summary.
Um, yes, sir, mayor. Um, so tonight, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta open it. That's right, it's a hearing. Uh, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Soon, second.
All in favor? Hi.
Actually to reopen, right?
No.
It's the first time.
It's the first time.
You're talking about the project. I think somebody needed.
Go ahead.
Comment out of like.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, tonight is the, um, public hearing opened with twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Tentative budget proposed by myself and staff weeks ago. And have individuals comment to the board regarding that budget. The budget this year is one point one six percent increase in the tax levy. Uh, the. Allowed a tax under the cap, uh, is two point five percent. That equates to, uh, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, we are at this tentative budget, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars under the cap. Board and staff will be going through approximately seven, uh, if we need more, there's an eight. Uh, budget hearings, or budget, um, workshops within the next few weeks. And, um, department heads and their, um, their assistants will be able to provide schedules. I'm sorry, presentations, uh, they're scheduled to provide present, uh, presentation to the board of trustee. The budget includes, uh, certain items that have been, um. Added as far as revenue, uh, for items that we've discussed here, uh, at the board of trustee level. We do not, um, include, as Mr. Tippett will point out at some point, the purchase of, um. Police cars through operating, uh, that had been removed. To have a discussion regarding, um, putting them back in as capital items. Just like we buy pickup trucks under capital, just like we buy, um, equipment under capital, um, those kinds of things. Have been included, uh, in this budget. As far as, uh. The board, if you have any questions about the budget that we presented. A couple of weeks earlier than the March twentieth meeting, you can ask me now, and I'll make sure I get back to you with the answer.
Okay, uh, Jerry, do you feel this is a responsible budget in light of, uh. Possible, you know, uh, downturns in the economy?
Yes.
You don't. Augie, do you feel confident in that too?
Yes, mayor.
Augie, how long have you been doing this process in the village of America?
Thirteen years.
Thank you, Augie.
I ask, wha- what would occur theoretically if, uh, we were to experience a dramatic economic downturn months into this budget?
People wouldn't be able to pay the taxes. So we would have less collected. Um, there would be other items such as potentially some recreation, uh, um, revenue that would be down. Because people wouldn't afford, wouldn't be able to afford to go to the park, pay for parking, beach, um, other events and other programming. If, um. If there were, um. Certain, um, real hard hit, uh. Types of situations for us here, our tax revenue would be reduced. Those are all things that, um. Um, have been projected for several years now and never, um, actually materialized. This is Westchester. Then other areas. But the reality is that there's less taxes. And more reliance on revenue. Because that's a mandate that I received from this board. This board has asked myself and staff to continue to look at.
Non-tax.
Schedules of fees. Items such as, uh, you know, making sure that everyone's paying their fair share. Um, trustee Natchez was very instrumental in making sure that the sports organizations paid. For what we, um, what we charge the youth organizations, uh, the youth sports organizations. And those fees have gone up significantly. This, uh, budget also increases the fees for. The Larchmont and Town of Maranac families who use our facilities because there are no facilities in. The Town of Maranac and recently they just, they just lost their facilities in, uh, in Larchmont. So as those communities make dramatic decisions to push. All of their youth sports to Maranac. I didn't think that that was fair for the average taxpayer of the village Maranac. So those fees went up. So.
I I I wanna point out something about. Dire economic situations and tax. You know, during the COVID crisis. I think unemployment got up to almost fifteen percent. And. People paid their taxes more regularly in the village than they do in any other year. It was, it was amazing. I think people prioritized and they said, all right, I gotta pay my taxes, you know, but maybe I'm not going on vacation this year, maybe I'm not going, you know. Uh, to the movies as much. But they paid their taxes at a higher rate than a normal year. So the idea that just because there's an economic downturn, that people wouldn't be paying their taxes hasn't been borne out.
Yeah, you're right.
But it still may be a hardship for individuals.
Or it's no, no, I'm not saying that, but what was was in tone before that because of recession, we would have to. Raise taxes because people wouldn't be paying their taxes. And that just wasn't the case that we saw in almost, you know, the worst economic downturn in recent memory.
And we, uh, and the other, the question I guess I'm really looking for is is that we have, uh. Mechanisms to adjust spending. Uh, in progress.
We do, but you also need to realize that this is the third full budget that I presented and the fourth one that I. Been the overseer on. And during COVID, we actually booked while other people. Had to, um, take out a fund balance, we booked. And put money back into fund balance after that COVID. Uh, budget. Last year, we did the same thing. We're using Glenn's number of five million plus, five million plus is on paper. Paper where we're using that money to fix our our facilities. And to replace police cars and DPW trucks with FEMA. That we're gonna have, we're gonna exceed what we've actually spent. Because we collect every single penny and we make sure that we have everything accounted for. So there's money that's coming back in. That while Glenn says we're spending it. That money is coming back to us in FEMA. We have weekly meetings with FEMA, weekly meetings, and I've showed you emails. Everyone has had emails regarding. What we're getting, what we've gotten, insurance, what we've gotten back from insurance. So there's money that was spent because we backed it with a major disaster. But that doesn't mean that that money never comes back to us. It comes back to us and back into the coffers.
Wh- when, when I saw that, uh, that our, um. Our, uh, percentage of, uh, what we're. The per- percentage of ta- uh, of, uh, the percentage we depend on for property tax, it's sixty-two percent and it's, it's, uh. I guess what, uh. That's lower than it's been in the past.
Because my staff has been directed and has been working on a mandate to make sure that our fees are adjusted accordingly. So that there's a less reliance on actually raising taxes and more reliance on use fees.
Biggest factors affecting that is, uh, Jerry, but we've moved the, uh, the sewer revenues back into the general fund. So those revenues are increasing our overall revenue, uh. Uh, growth. That's me, that's where the the biggest change in the percentage is.
Right, so it's a. Property taxes, uh, that used to go to pay for your sewer is now being, uh, paid for via your water usage. And as I pointed out, you know. That's why context and history is so important. You know, when you, when you're talking about budgets and you're, you're looking at, you know, isolated numbers, you know, if. You'll. Cheap, when you pay for the sewer upkeep and maintenance via your water use. You get, you know, a bigger hit on a restaurant than you do on a family home. You know, you get, there's all kinds of, uh. Business and I know institutions that don't pay property tax, but have to pay the sewer rent fee. Churches, all the schools, Westchester County Sewer Treatment Plant, which uses a ton of water. So if you have a, uh, let's just say, for instance, let's just say, just add it to use numbers that, you know, I can understand. Let's just say the building, uh, where the, uh. The Maric diner is is worth two million dollars. And you have a house somewhere in this community that's worth two million dollars. If these fees were charged via property taxes, you'd be paying the same as the diner, right? But what we do with for water fees, obviously the diner is gonna be paying exponentially more. Because, you know, that they're using water constantly, the whole business is water related. So th- they'll be paying much more than a family of four who showering and using the facilities just normally as people do. So it's a much fairer way of allocating this cost. And that, as Jerry pointed out, was, uh, was a drive, or as Glenn pointed out, was a driver of, you know, the discrepancy. In the property tax, you know, uh, as opposed to fees.
The general fund had to.
Right. So it it it's, it's important. To, you know. It's easy to take some blank numbers if you don't know the history and say, hey, look at this and look at that. But you have to know the history. You had to have been here for a while to figure out why they did that. And, you know, Jerry and Augie. Are really, really good at this and I've been watching them for years and I've I've known Augie for twenty years doing this and there is nobody more cautious. Than Augie Fosco. Uh, you know, he's, he's. Very conservative. And if we were doing something and he has said it at at times in my career, uh, you know. You, you, when I was a trustee, I I remember saying, oh, this is gonna get you in trouble because it is, and he's very honest. And, you know, he's very forthright and I I don't believe he would lead us astray and I believe that. If there was a problem. He'd identify it and let us know as he does as the budget rolls along. We get reports every two weeks, Augie? Every month.
Two weeks, you get expenditure reports and every month you get a financial statement.
So we could monitor, but.
Yes.
And alerts. And Augie. In the, in the past fiscal year, how much is our unrestricted fund balance group?
Last year, it's moved four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand. So even what 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 has gone on. We've, we've saved four hundred thousand.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Right, right now, mayor, we are at thirty-three percent. Uh, of fund balance of of our budget in fund balance. We have thirty-three percent set aside of our annual budget in fund balance.
And, you know, a lot of communities are using their fund balance to balance their budget.
If you look at the kind of Maranac budget from December. They use three times as much fund balance this year than they did last year.
And they were overcast.
Can I ask a question? Because it seems to be that we had a few residents that came in and talked about transparency and they talked about what they see or what they don't see. Versus what. Obviously, what we're being told right now, um. Where it, where could there be a. A lapse in in in, um. Information given?
In this budget?
Yeah.
That budget accounts for everything. This budget accounts for it. The only question now on this budget is what the board of trustees wants to add to the budget. Or wants to eliminate from the budget.
So everything you say is something that they can see present day on the web?
Everyone has been able to see it.
Got it.
Yeah, I mean, and we've also re-formatted our budget. To the extent that we received the, I would call the, um. Uh, what's, what's the abbreviation, Augie? Was it the CAFR?
Befo.
Oh, GFO, Government Fire and Officers Association. Yeah. And that's because of the, um. You know, we, we use our budget as a document to. Uh, provide information to the public. You know, it's a, it's a teaching document. It's a. It's a document that the public should be able to use. And that's all a budget is, is it's a, you know, it's it's a plan, but you try to make it as transparent as possible. That's why we put things. Like the departmental narratives in there. That's why we put all the the various charts and and figures in there. Uh, in order to, uh, I I don't wanna say dumb down the process, but, you know, make it easier for. Uh, people to understand, you know, where their money is coming from, how it's being spent and. Yeah, it's something that we have been recognized for in terms of, uh, the awards we've received for our budget.
And and to the, to the point of transparency, I just wanna let the public know. That there'll be tentative budget work sessions. They start at five thirty here, uh, March twenty-ninth. Twenty twenty-three. Uh, April third, twenty twenty-three, April eleventh, April twelfth, April thirteenth, April seventeenth if necessary. And they're all on TV. We're the only community. That televises our budget hearings. So, you know. There, there, there's no more transparency than that. You know, I was with the Town of Maranac for four years and they wouldn't televise their budget hearings. Uh, and so, you know. People talk about transparency, you know, you can see everything that's happening here. You know. So. I wanna thank staff and I know that the, uh. The department heads worked really hard on coming in with budgets that were responsible. And to carrying their wishes. Down to a manageable level. And, you know, it is a tough, it's always a tough year because people struggle to live here. Uh, somebody in the audience?
Yes.
Mr. Tippett?
No, number one, just to, uh. As per, you know, you talked about transparency and everything. You'll never hear from me that there's no transparency. I tell everybody on the budget committee, if you want to know numbers. Ask me, I'll tell you where to find it. Because only you showed me over the years where to find the numbers. We get an expense report every week, we get a revenue report every week. Every month, we get a report of how our budget is doing up to a certain point. Jerry mentioned that, I said, well, right now we're five point seven million dollars. Over in expenses. I didn't say that we couldn't make it up. I didn't say that wasn't gonna be reduced. That's just a fact of the matter. Two point seven million of it happens to be. Ida money. I'm quite aware of that too. But we also have added salaries. We also, we've added salaries over the course of a year. We're spending more on salaries now. Than we did previously, over seven percent more.
So I need to, I need to. Ask.
Yeah, but just.
Just, just one thing. Some salaries you see have gone up based on.
But overall, we're.
Let him, let him finish his point. Let him finish his point.
I don't think, I don't think you need to calculate that because when we sto- when we negotiated union contracts. We eliminated step increases in union contracts. So now, union contracts have been saving us money. There's a couple, you can point out to a couple, including myself, that have gotten increases. But if you look at the percentages of the entire staff. You will see that there's a reduction in salaries. That's how we're able to make up these budgets the way we do. I think you're looking at some people. And you're looking at specific items, Mr. Sonoff, who has brought us twelve million dollars worth of grant money.
I don't look at the individual, Gary. Like, we added a whole department that we're now spending four hundred thousand dollars in since two years ago.
Which department, HR?
Yeah.
Right.
What, what I'm saying is. I agree with you. Right now, according to, uh, the, uh, statistics that you gave out. We're a hundred and seventy-nine thousand ahead of the budget from last year, which means we'd be dipping four hundred and. Twenty-one thousand dollars into the fund. That was, that was based on the, on the last report that was given out in, um, for for the end of February.
End of February, right.
End of February. That's, that, that's what the report, report says. We brought in over a million dollars, uh, extra in, um. In, uh, insurance collection so far this year. I think it's, uh, nine, uh, nine thirty, uh, seven. We're going to bring in over, um. Uh, about eight hundred thousand more in sales tax. And that's one of the big increases. The sales taxes is a large increase. I have no problem with that. I haven't had a problem with that. In years where other people do. I haven't worried about a recession with sales tax. I don't worry about the mortgage tax. I think, you know, the mortgage tax, the prices have been gone up, it's very accurate. Where I have a problem with is we're going to be, um. Opening, um. Uh, ground opening fees that we collected thirty-seven thousand this year, next year is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I look at the budget and I see that we got two hundred eighty thousand. For the, uh, for the tennis. Yet it also shows a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of rent. We get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars minimum and if we get more than that, but we don't get a quarter eighty thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, you do.
Where does that show?
I have it right here. I can show it to you.
Okay.
You done about tennis?
Show, show me afterwards.
Yeah, I'll give it to you.
I've never seen that.
Yeah, I'll give it to you. It's one twenty-five, by the way, and then it's over.
Yeah, then, um. We're, we're doubling the fees. Now Jerry touched on it, but are we really doubling the the fees for the kids to use the fields by eighty thousand in one year? These, these are.
Apparently, yes.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Yes, we are. Because most of those kids are large Montana Maranac, some are village.
Yeah.
And I get that.
But the, these are just the question that you go over the budget where you see. Large increase. We're also having a decrease of five hundred thousand in the police overtime. When we still have a lot of work to do. We're, we're gonna be closing the, uh, Waverly Avenue Bridge. We're gonna be using a ton of overtime and the town's gonna have a ton of overtime for police to move to, to deal with that traffic.
All, all, all one hand out the other.
Yeah.
Those all wash, you know that, right?
It's a pest.
Yeah, it's a pest. You know that.
Oh, no, I realized that.
Okay.
But it's, it's still reflects in, in, in the budget.
Not when we do adjustments during the year. Not when we do adjustments during the year.
It's a revenue and 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 expense all in the same way.
You know, we've collected, uh, we probably almost doubled the amount of money we collect in sales tax over the last few years. There, uh, mortgage tax, other taxes. What I worry about is we've spent it all and now we still gotta go put police cars back into the, um.
Okay.
Into the capital budget, bonding it. It's not about putting in the capital budget. We shouldn't be bonding all the wheels. I, I, I would, I would not, uh, bond all the, uh, trucks that we have. Because you're going to need that money for village hall. For, uh, the, the Hunter Lot next door. For the seawall. For Halsted Avenue. So you have a lot of projects that are ten, twenty million dollar projects.
So I brought that, I brought that, that example up because I knew I could talk to Glenn about it, but the reality is, last year, we negotiated. Movement in, on, still under the cap, but movement up the line in order to put those cars back in, if you remember correctly.
Absolutely, yes.
So that's, that, that becomes a board decision now, not necessarily, it becomes the board decision.
I think last year what you did was you put it and then you appropriated out of unused funds, the money for the cars. So correct.
We had, we had additional funds, correct. There's also additional funds. That we talked about tonight as far as opera money, which they could easily purchase three police cars out of opera money if they wanted to.
See, that's why I'm not particularly worried about the cap. I'm more worried about, I want a sound budget. That in the future, and then they have four positions of looking, of they're looking to, and I believe in the, in the middle of the year.
Mid-year hires.
Yes.
One of them is peak parking enforcement officer.
And.
Which bring in.
Let, let me just go. To lose point. If, if we come in short to revenue, the only revenue we're gonna come in short is, um, uh, uh, sales tax or something at a given year. We're locked in in what we collect in property tax.
Yeah.
And we get, we're never gonna not collect it because on March, uh, March tenth, whatever, March eighteen. The following year, Augie has an auction and we get rid of all of that. We don't hold any of that. What can happen is over two or three periods, a year period. If you have a house in slump and the price of housing goes down and people get served sororities. Then you might get caught in, in a, uh.
I just wanted to hear him say it, that's all. I appreciate it.
But, yes.
But all, 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 all I'm worried about is there's, there's, there's not that little extra money that is needed to, to pay for something that comes up. It's a very tight budget. There's, 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 there's nothing left over if something has to get paid for.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
All right. Uh, need a motion to close the public hearing. Uh, need a motion to close the public hearing.
Wait, do we want to close it or adjourn it? It's the budget. You just want to adjourn it.
I, I. I'm only looking at the revenues. Um. From what I see on. Page sixty five. We're projecting thirty percent more revenues than last. Budget, is that correct?
In what line?
Um, I'm on page sixty five, the schedule of revenues. It looks like um, two thousand twenty three, we projected or we budgeted thirteen million, five hundred thousand. The share is sixteen million, three hundred fourteen. She's about. Three, three million dollars more or thirty.
You have it?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Okay, um. That seems like. Pretty rosy scenario. Um. Even if we weren't. As people say, heading into a recession. And I, you know, I went through their avenues and I have some just. Questions that I have out of curiosity. So we're, we're projecting twenty percent more sales tax. Um, a hundred and eighty percent more in building permit fees. Is that because of an increase in fees or is that just?
Increase in fees.
Okay, so has the board increased those fees or can the building department just do that independently?
It's all based on the fee schedule that the board will approve.
But they haven't yet. Okay. Um, I think Glenn brought up the field maintenance fees. Um. I thought this was weird. Recreation fees, um. There's a projected eighty three percent decrease.
It's, it's moved to a different um, structure.
Okay. Um.
Glenn, we created.
Boat storage seems to be completely new. A hundred thousand dollars for boat storage.
That's correct.
Is that going to be a new fee?
It's going to be a new fee for individuals who want to park their boats. In the harbor parking lot over winter.
Okay, so, but we have no history with that.
Oh, no.
Okay, so.
We just have other charges, others charge. And we're comparable to that.
Okay, but people have to take advantage of. Um.
Glenn, did you see seventy five fifty? We broke down every event.
Yes, I did that. Thank you.
Okay, let, let's, let's just slip this.
Um, so. A fifty percent increase in building permit. So does that mean you're projecting raising the fees fifty percent or?
Post COVID.
It's, it's, so it's an increase in building permits as well as an increase in the fees at the same time.
Okay, do you have any kind of? Sense of how many more building fees we're going to get? How many more building permits we're going to get?
But do you recall what, what Carolina said? She said that there was an increase. We have an increase now. We, we projected eight hundred, eight hundred plus thousand dollars. We're on track to bring in one point two million this year. That's where that comes from.
So fifty percent.
Okay. Um, street opening permits.
That's going up significantly.
I'm sorry?
That's going up significantly.
The price.
Price and also, um. DPW permits will be required and not gifted to individuals who are asking. We have new leadership at DPW.
I'm sorry, we were gifting street opening permits?
They will be required now.
They weren't required before?
They were required. Sometimes they were taken, sometimes they weren't taken.
Okay, with no consequence, what did you say?
That's what you're saying. He said what he said.
I'm sorry?
You said with no consequence. He didn't say that. That's what you said, so let's not put words in his mouth.
Okay, I'll ask the question. There was no consequence for when somebody didn't give us a street opening permit.
Continue with your comments, please.
So we're not answered. Um, rental inspection fee, is that on the books?
Not yet.
So that's another hundred thousand. Um, and I'm just curious mostly.
That fee is in the proposed fee schedule that was um. Uh, on the work session tonight.
Right, right. I mean, all, all I'm saying is these are projected. Um. And you have to pass laws for these, right?
They're in the fee schedule.
They're not a law, it's a schedule.
Oh, I'm sorry, this isn't part of the. But there was nothing in the past. I mean, so you're not changing the fee. I mean, the, this item here says.
There was a fee in the past. We just didn't do it. It was already in the fee schedule.
Okay. We didn't enforce it.
Um, every citation is there.
Okay. Um, sale of property. This is the, um, it says recycling sales, and these are small amounts. I'm just curious. Recycling sales are what? Nine thousand dollars.
You're talking about the uh, food scrap containers?
I don't know. It said recycling sales. I don't know what mine is.
No, I think that might be the um. That might also be the vouchers that we used to, that we have on the books that we uh. Uh, we require. Uh, contractors to purchase from us if they want to dump at our facility. It was a, something we adopted a couple of years ago so as to. Try and minimize co- uh, contractors dropping off the yard waste at our facility. Is that the one that says zero to? And I don't have, have that in front of me.
Yeah, I don't remember it. Dan knows, Dan has a memory.
Yeah, is that the one, this is like zero to fifty yards or something like that?
Okay, um, sale. We're selling our compost.
No, we're collecting its fee to collect the food wrap.
But no, but that's the food scrap service fee.
So I don't recall what the.
So there's sale of compost above that.
I don't remember what that is. I can look it up, but I don't remember.
Again, I'm just curious. I, I thought we gave the compost. Alright, um, it just seems like thirty percent increase year over year. Is kind of a risk scenario, um.
I, I think it's the, I think it's my staff working on a mandate to make sure that fees are appropriate so that we're not imposing. Like the field use on the taxpayers. That's what I've been.
No, I understand. You can raise fees and you can create new ones and you can start fighting old ones, but they have to come to fruition. Sure, then to be a real impact on the budget.
I agree. Five minutes.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
No, no, what was the comments?
Five minutes. That's what I said.
Five minutes or Mister Five Minutes?
I called you Mister Five Minutes.
You did.
I did.
Is that, is that appropriate?
Just go. Come on. It's eleven o'clock.
Yeah. Francis Slavic Plathon, first question is. In the uh, budget, why is there, why is twenty twenty, twenty twenty one not included in the summary? Periods.
What's included is the prior two fit complete fiscal years. The current fiscal year and next fiscal year. So it'll be twenty one, it should be.
Looking at the summary chart, you have a, you have a fiscal year for every year from two thousand. Twenty twenty, the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four proposed, but there's a skip from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. Sixty three. Page numbers, maybe A, it says A on the bottom.
Sixty three.
You talking about sixty three, page sixty three?
That's the budget summary, that's just twenty twenty three, twenty four.
You know. You're right.
So we don't have.
It was transposition of the budget message. We have to update that.
Okay, so there's an accident.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
On the budget message.
Okay. We'll make sure we fix that tomorrow.
And, and I think reasonable minds can differ. I'm, I'm an economic prognosticator, but um, the situation. It's dire today. I don't know that COVID is the best. It's worth a look back at, especially given the amount of stimulus that came out in that year and then was spent in the economy. So in reviewing the budget, I would just suggest that we go back to. Oh, wait, to eleven, to eleven. And see what happened with revenues then. This, for purposes of what's been disclosed to us, it's just historical expenditures, not historical growth in revenue. And that might be a better indicator of what you could expect if revenues were to go down. As for transparency, I think the budget was provided is very transparent. Um. Bill, Jerry's comment just now would have had nice things to say about what I've heard from him, but I think he just demonstrated. Some of the unprofessional conduct that I've heard about in the community. The transparency issue. Was around the approval of that contract and how it was done. And. I think it was a failure of process. And I think it's opened you up to. You know, a potential claim under that public meeting law. Uh, when an attorney says something is a term of art. That means it's not a slam dunk. Either way. And it wasn't necessary. Um, and. Nobody who is the highest paid position. In any industry. In a full-time role. Beats a part-time job. The mayor's public service outside of his full-time role. Is always permitted because it's encouraged in this country. But taking another job. Undisclosed outside of the contract.
It was not undisclosed.
Hillary, Hillary.
As soon as you took the job, you let the board know. That's, you know.
They were aware completely from day one.
It may not be, I'm, can I make a? No, but I want to be respectful of people's um, time, so if I can make a statement. Oh, um. The, you, I know that the people, uh, some people may feel a ways about what part-time jobs people have. Especially Jerry's and the amount of money he gets paid and everything else. What I feel personally, no, I don't make as much money as Jerry. I don't make as much money as half of you. But. What is somebody else's business is somebody else's business. If he isn't, in, in my feelings about that. Is, it, it is not disrupting. The overall running of this community. The overall running of this community, and especially when we, not on any given day, does any particular resident know? How many hours a individual, not just Jerry, any individual puts in. And if I had, if I came to you months from now and say, I deserve a raise. Because I put in way more than what this village pays me. Then maybe it's within my right, but then I have to come to the people for it, right? But for this contract and for whatever, the, the whole notion of him taking another part-time, that's his business. That's his business. If it's interrupting our overall uh, running of our community. And I get it, people are mad about possibly the um, the mannerism of, if it, of what um, how it was done. I've seen a lot of community uh, meetings be, uh, uh. Why, why, obviously, while I'm sitting here in this position, and I've seen and I've heard a lot of community meetings. Um, how they were run and, and things that are being said through the community prior. A lot of things that are said now. Isn't even things that people even complained about before. You know, it's, and I'm not invalidating any person. But I, I, it just makes me, it's sitting in this seat, wonder your motives sometimes, not you. Not any particular work. I just really sometimes think about. Your whys, and I'm always constantly thinking about people's whys. This community is trying to move forward. And it's sometimes really hard, and I, I love, most of the time, the, the, the comments that are being. Um, asked of us from the, from the public because. It challenges the thought because whatever I'm, I, whatever you think, I may not be thinking about. And that's just valid, but. The why behind some people's statements, I just want. I just really hope that, um. Is not with malice.
Mayor, can I, thank you. But this is my second. Part-time job while working. In the community. I had one last year as well. That was disclosed to the Board of Trustees. It was added to my LinkedIn. That lasted for six months. And I left that job. And then I was able to obtain a. Another part-time job. Of which. I make half. What I make here. In a community of nineteen hundred homes that is being forced. To put up six hundred and fifty affordable units. And through some industry individuals, people in the business, they asked me to help them out. Because they're trying to deal with getting past the hurdles of putting up these six hundred and fifty affordable units. I appreciate, I need to apologize to you. Because I've been hit pretty hard tonight. And I'm sorry about that comment. But this board knows what I do all the time. This board receives hundreds of thousands of emails from me. They know everything about me. They know what I do, what my staff does. From four thirty in the morning till eleven o'clock at night. I would never jeopardize what I do here because of how much I love it here, because I live here. To take on a part-time job to help another community. Temporarily. I would never do that.
I. Say, I accept your apology and I apologize for. Saying the job was undisclosed, that's my mistake. And. I hope Jerry's successful and I hope everyone's successful here. I have serious concerns about. And, and, and I.
Bring him in, please, because I encourage it. I want to explain stuff. Look at the report that I have with him. He questions budget twenty four seven.
And, and I get it, the last thing anyone wants is their taxes to go up, but what I'm hearing is you're feeling pressure to. Increase revenue assumptions and. Um, my question is, what is the basis for those assumptions? And if they're wrong, what happens?
I get it. I understand that. And it's on me, it's on me if that happens and when that happens. And it did happen. Um, when we started to get into the worst days of COVID, where I had to hold on positions. We had positions that we were going to bring in mid-year. We had to hold off on those positions. There were periods of time when I've had to adjust. The budget, where I had to go into the departments and said, I need an additional ten percent from your contract lines. I needed ten percent from your, from your surplus line, from your supply lines.
We, we also got unpaid furloughs.
Right, we also got unpaid furloughs, myself included. We took unpaid furloughs. A bunch of staff was voluntary for the staff. Not necessarily for the board, it was voluntary for the board, but they all did it. Um, but there was adjustments that had to be made during those difficult times. If we get hit with difficult times, we will have a plan immediately in place to deal with those, to deal with those things. But as far as the increases in what you're seeing now, we're just catching up to some of the mandates that the board has asked me to look into. And my staff is finally catching up with those processes that we've gone through to analyze and make sure that we're on, on target. The seventy-five, fifty lines right now, this is the first year that we're able to disclose how much each event, not disclose, but present to the mayor and board at their request and budget committee members, including Ellen, who's very instrumental in, in what we, how we shape things. You know now how much each event costs because we've been able to break it down. That took a couple of years to get to the point where we can show you that we had a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in celebration that we set aside. In fact, we spent three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So now that three eighty is in the budget. In the event that the board wants to cut certain celebrations, we can just cut those items and not worry about guessing anymore about what celebrations or the events, you know, the fireworks and things like that.
That now includes police sanitation, whatever, overtime.
Glenn, Glenn, Glenn.
So, so our process gets better and better every year. But you're right, there is always that concern, and it's been a concern of the board in the past. And it's a concern of yours now about where the, where the economy is going to go and where the budget is going to go. But when Larchmont and Mamaroneck are not providing field for the kids, they're going to come to us.
I think also one of the things that we did ask, and I know that I'm personally all about like lowering the community's taxes, also also worried about if we're constantly asking things of our residents, what are we giving? Right? Um, and I think what in terms of Augie, Jerry, and everybody who works for the village has been trying to creatively think of ways to not increase necessarily the taxes, but the services across the border bring in revenue because we do have to bring in revenue just to lower taxes and try to alleviate the burden on the residents. It just is what it is. And then what we have to deal with village is also stemming from what people, what the, the, the state and federal governments is doing that is hurting us. So we have to do certain things that is not necessarily favorable. But I encourage you to sit in those meetings too and talk to the senators and the legislators and everybody else to say, hey, this is how it's affecting me locally. This is how it's affecting our local government. We have to do this. We have to do certain things because of cost of living ain't going up. It's not doing what it needs to do. So it alleviates or to make sure that people can afford to live.
Yeah, you know, we, oftentimes, the maximum amount that our tax levy can go up is less than the annual increases that are foisted upon us through our, the pension programs, the place and fire pension, the employee retirement system, and the, and our health, cost for healthcare through the Nisha program. I think even this year, the cost of those two items greatly exceeds what the maximum amount our levy could go up before it exceeds the. So, you know, it's a, it's a constant every year exercise to overcome those. And I can say that, you know, every year, we have been able to increase our fund balance and, and the year in a positive manner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
No, I just reiterate, you know, I, I appreciate everything you guys do. I know it's not easy to sit up there and
It was a long night.
Questions and have a long night, but it is important to everyone. These are our tax dollars and you're the steward of those tax dollars and appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just, just to go to Jerry's availability, you know, I, I, I start work at seven o'clock in the Bronx every morning. And Jerry, I know is an early riser. And many times I call him on my way into work, you know, if it's snowing or if it's raining hard, find out the condition in the community or to just, you know, ask him a question because I know he's up.
Yeah, we haven't had too many of the, we see blacktop yet.
Yeah.
Here, right?
Yes.
But in the past, do you see blacktop yet?
Yeah, I, I would give Jerry the three points of how we're doing compared to other communities that be driving through. So, you know, the man is available. And what he does in his time is his time. And if he wasn't available, he wouldn't be here.
You gotta keep saying.
So we need to adjourn the budget hearing. One more. So we're going to adjourn it to winter.
Second. Yeah, she's been all along.
Wednesday? Yeah, so Wednesday, we have another budget, we just go, we just. You seconded it all?
Yep, yeah, no, second.
Augustino, please.
Trustee's rolling?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yes.
Young, yes.
Yes.
Hi, thank you all. Okay, now we can get to the agenda. Oh. This should have a timer, right? All right. Item two, a resolution. Budget transfer for bond interest payment.
Sorry, I don't know why I end what like that.
But I have the resolution in front of me.
Yeah.
Questions or concerns?
No.
Like the audience. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Or call.
Trustee's rolling?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yeah.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
A resolution authorizing budget amendment for IT part-time personnel. And this is taking seven hundred, seventy-five hundred dollars from the contingent and putting into central data processing, part-time salaries. Anybody on the board have questions, sir?
No.
Mr. Teger?
Yes, I have a question. A year and a half ago, the board, I think, spent fifty-five thousand dollars buying a municipality fire for the second time. I don't see any indication that it's been implemented despite the appropriated money for another part-time person too.
This was the part-time person. They're still working on the final implementation. They have a date of soft go-live of April twentieth. And it was seventy-two thousand that was spent on me to see.
Okay, and a few months ago, you didn't hire somebody specifically for, or appropriate money specifically for.
You're a part-timer.
Okay, so this is this part-time.
Part-time, yeah, part-time.
Okay. April first, huh?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Four twenty, okay.
Four twenty, yeah. You'll remember that date. I need a motion.
Second.
Or you call.
Trustee's rolling?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yeah.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. A resolution approving manual payments. Tonight, the manual payment is a round number, one thousand dollars.
Need a motion?
Almost.
Second. Or you call.
Trustee's rolling?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yep.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Next up, resolution approving abstract of ordered vouchers and tonight's grand total is five hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Mr. Teger?
Page twenty-four. There's a payment ASAP for shipping charges for record for fifteen hundred dollars. All the beach.
So that, that, there were a number of invoices that were either never delivered to us or never paid. This is going back about, I can't remember the exact number, I think it's about eighteen months of, of shipping charges for various.
That's not one giant.
No, it's not one giant.
It was an elephant.
The kill. The kill.
Evergreen Arbor is twenty-nine thousand dollars for tree removals. That's a lot of trees. Do this go to the tree committee?
They did not miss a beat. Tree committee by email when we make a decision on whether a tree needs to be removed.
When did you go to?
Different times, various times.
I'm sorry, so this is for one month? Did you go to them, was this for the month of February?
That's when we received the bill, right?
Okay.
But the
They know you every month.
Let them answer the question, please.
The tree committee received emails from me regarding the removal of the trees when I do the assessment on location.
Okay, so there's a record of those emails?
Yes, they're not on the tree committee's agenda. Yeah, they're, they're sent to the tree committee and the tree committee is free to respond to those emails to me directly.
Right, but they need to go on their agenda.
Why?
Because you send a tree committee and anything the tree committee reviews under open meeting law has to be available to the public.
I reviewed the tree to be removed and they
Are informing them.
I'm informing them of it.
The tree code says you may cause trees on public property to be removed after consultation with the tree committee.
So I send them the email with the.
I understand. You're not understanding my point. Open meetings law, I believe, requires that whatever the tree committee reviews is made available to the public. So I looked on their agendas. I did not see twenty-nine thousand dollars with the tree.
Okay. Okay.
So, I mean, I hope in the future you'll do that.
No, I'm doing what I need to do, which is inform them that I've decided to take down a tree.
Okay, then I would hope you advise the tree committee or Mr. Spaldino would that they should comply with open meetings law like all the board should.
Should.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think we made a mistake when we allowed every board to have to have advisory boards to have to comply with open meetings. I think it's.
It, it wasn't you that did that. It's just state law, Tom.
No.
You don't understand.
No, no, you're wrong. No, okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm not engaging with this silliness.
I'm sorry. You not know this?
Oh, stop, Stuart, please. It's just, the harassing is just unbelievable. Just been agree saying.
Informing you of the law is harassing.
You have no basis to inform anybody of the law. You're not trained in the law. You're not a lawyer.
I can read, Tom, and you couldn't do.
You.
I will send it to you when I get home.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. I can't wait to read that. I'll, I'll stay up.
I would guess you won't, but.
Just finish, please.
Got to let it go.
Page seven. Abrams Fensterman. There's a charge from McCrory Teger on here. I was kind of surprised to hear tonight that apparently there are going to be three attorneys working on the McCrory Teger petition.
You said number seven, page seven.
Not sure what you're referring.
Yeah, is it appropriate that we answer questions about his own lawsuit to him?
Okay, so the, the board knows, as I understand it, tonight you announced that Whiteman Osterman has been retained, is that correct?
We announced that.
Yeah, you announced that. Why not just say it, Tom? You said it tonight.
Then what you have to.
My understanding is Laurie Lee Dixon of McCarthy Fingar is also representing it. So that's three attorneys on a matter where there's there was no decision by the zoning board. It just, I mean, I think hopefully the board will manage litigation better in the future.
You might, you might want to stop supplying the board with so much litigation.
Now, you might also want to inform your ability manager not to interfere in zoning.
Yeah, well, that's not what happened.
And they even membered at the board.
But Mr. Teger, the judge, the judge, the judge, the judge has already decided that the zoning matter about your house, you were wrong.
I'm sorry, the zoning board decided that my house had no issues.
No, that's, that's not the case. That's you dissembling, but go ahead.
I'm sorry, what did the zoning board disassemble here? Well, you just can't state.
Yeah, you know what? You, you just can't dissemble constantly and act like you're
Mayor.
Act like you're a lawyer and, and, you know.
Being like I'm a lawyer.
You're constantly. Please, please don't, please don't yell. You're constantly giving legal advice, legal.
Giving legal advice.
Mr. Teger, I, when I read your emails, that's what they are.
Sorry, if you want to tell me what illegal.
I don't like, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to feed this anymore. I don't want to feed this anymore. It's like pretty sick.
It's don't, am I?
Can I just say that the representation situation will become clear to Mr. Teger in due course.
Well, I'm sure he'll, it'll spread, you know, misinformation before.
Can you just say tonight whether there are three attorneys assigned to it?
Presentation.
Okay, fine.
I'll become clear in due course.
Page eight, Abramans Fensterman. Fifteen thousand dollars for review of thirteen ten flagler drive. Why would that be on there? That was a planning board viewing, and there's certainly problems with that. Resolution.
What else do you have? What else do you have?
I'm waiting for an answer, Tom.
You don't have to wait for this. He doesn't have to provide. Well, you wait. How much time is left on our friend here? You're in town.
What made you long down?
It's over.
I'm sorry, it's page eight, your bill. Fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars includes capture and review of thirteen ten flagler drive.
I'm not sure what that is, but capture was, capture would have covered all of us.
So are you saying that?
No, I hadn't been told.
It's an error.
Bill in front of.
Nobody even said that one.
Both know what it's paying for.
I don't even see that one. Which one are you talking about?
Page eight?
Yep.
Third item down, Abrams Fensterman.
Okay.
Review of thirteen ten flagler drive. Just so the board knows, thirteen ten flagler drive, apparently, and I've written this statement, has approved the resolution where there's no, the final plans they reviewed, the architectural plans for the building of the house, which should have included the flag of zone compliance aren't available. They were never showed up on the website. This was a public hearing. I think that's a serious issue. And I'm not sure why it's being represented that there was work done on it by your firm when it should have been covered by escrow.
Perhaps it was placed in the wrong place, but I don't know. I don't have.
Does anybody have a question about it?
Tom?
Your time is way up and please finish. It's eleven thirty at night.
Are you timing? I muted.
I passed already.
You're way over.
The final thing I would say is that I believe with all of Augie's skills, he could easily make a digital file of the invoices. So this board would actually know what it's paying for when you approve the order bills. Thank you and have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. I need a motion to approve.
Hold on a second.
Paul.
Trustee's rolling?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Young? Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. I hand you the ball, you please.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right.
New business. Your business, wow. What?
Um. The bottom, please, eleven.
Number one, so you can. Okay, we're, we're going to go out of order. We're going to go to four D of new business because there's, there's a gentleman here, a resolution accepting donation for the PB, for the PVA.
Oh, you've been waiting, yeah, because.
I, I didn't realize.
We're very sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, rushing a plane and.
Yeah.
Rushed here, so. Part of it. Mark Valentine, this is the PVA. I won't take much of your time. Real quick. July, January, twenty, two thousand, twenty-two, Detective Jason Rivera from NYPD was one of the two officers that were killed at the thirty-second precinct in Harlem. During all those proceedings. Uh, during all those proceedings. And through all the news and media coverage, one picture in particular came up. It was actually a. Captain Rivera down at the Harper. From that date. Uh, my wife is actually the one that saw the picture. I brought it back to my PBA. We've been discussing it, collaborating. Uh, in collaboration with those manager and also in collaboration with the Mark Sporman. Also making contact with NYPD through their family liaison, made contact with their family. Uh, PD will be going in the black for that and ultimately. In light of everything that's going on and looking at trying to get people to come to our shores. This is someone who actually came here, didn't live here. Uh, so it could be a an area of safe refuge, if you will, somewhere peaceful and positive that can I remember, had his memory. Remain intact. And, uh, that's what we're trying to achieve tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for the wait. I I I I'm sorry, Mark. Uh, so this is us approving, accepting a donation from the PBA. Uh, in the amount of two thousand dollars uh, to honor Detective Jason Rivera.
Correct. The bench is already in place. It's.
You're putting a plaque in the.
Exactly.
Is there a any representation of the picture?
Uh, I have it on my.
No, I mean, I mean, that that would the.
Send it, send it to Augie. We'll put it on a website.
Yeah.
If that's okay with his family and all that.
It's a picture of him on TV. That's the pic. That's where we got it from. And just through. Collaborating and working our way through the process, that's where we got information.
Are you the PBA president?
I'm not.
Good. I knew you were smart. Thank you, Mark. Uh, I'll make a motion that the board approves the two thousand dollar donation from our patrolman's bit of association.
Second.
Trustee is rolling.
Yes.
Does it read? Young.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Uh, and I am sorry to.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Uh, resolution authorizing modification of false alarm fines. Now, as as wild as this seems, we need a motion. To go into. To become, to become uh, the 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 fine appeal board.
I call it the Board of Alarmists. It's online.
Chairman of the Board of Alarmists.
Uh, so I make a motion that we. Enter into uh, the Board of Alarm Appeals.
No moves. Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, uh, what happened here is two uh. Village entities, Bullseye Glass and Sarah Newman had excessive uh, false alarm charges. Bullseye Glass False Alarm was caused there. They're at one one five Hoyt Avenue. It was caused by the flood. And the alarm kept going off, uh, but they couldn't get in their building because of the flood. So, you know, it it that's. Annoying and and it's hard on our first responders to have to continuously a respond to an alarm. That, uh. You know, i- is faulty, but you you can't blame them for not being able to fix it because it was inaccessible. Uh, so what we're going to do now, there's two resolutions. Uh, the first was that we talked about this uh, in work sessions two weeks ago. Uh, and that was that was on TV. Uh, what we're gonna do with Bullseye Glass is we're going to reduce their fines by one hundred percent. Uh, because in, you know, they they really couldn't help themselves. Uh, so. I will make that motion.
Second, second.
Uh, or you call.
Trustee is Rollings.
Yes.
Does it read?
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
May Murphy.
Hi, and the next up is Sarah Newman Nursing. Uh, Sarah Newman Nursing Home had a lot of a. A lot of alarms and uh, it was caused by. Residents who, let's just say, couldn't really control their actions. So they asked for some consideration. So we're not gonna totally forgive them, but we're gonna give them a break. And we're gonna reduce their alarm, uh, their alarm penalty by fifty percent. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
No.
I'll make the motion. Augustino.
Trustee is Rollings.
Yes.
Does it read?
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Mary Murphy.
Hi. And and the situation that uh, Sarah Newman. Was dealing with, I I believe they found a way to rectify it, so. We appreciate that, you know, trying to do the right thing. Four B, resolution authorizing purchase of two Chevrolet Silverado trucks for salters and plows. Uh, Jared is replacing. Existing trucks that had more than a served their life out.
Correct. They're.
Over twenty years old.
Over twenty years old. In addition to that. They have um, equipment that is no longer serviceable, so that will be replaced as well.
You know, I was on the board when truck sixty three was born. Yeah, now it's retired and I'm still working. That being apropos of nothing, uh, the total cost. Is eight hundred, no, eighty two thousand, seven hundred eighty two for one of the Chevrolets.
Wait, wait, eighty two thousand?
Eighty two thousand, seven hundred eighty two. That's with the dump body. Uh, and eighty eight thousand, four hundred forty five with it. Chevy Silverado with the dump body and a storage cabinets and is the leave time is eight to twelve months for each truck.
But there's also some add-ons.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, ma'am. The cost uh, for uh, one Silverado thirty five hundred. It with the uh, light package and the radio package is eighty six thousand, three hundred eighty one dollars and forty cents. And then the other one is.
Ninety two, because it's got the radio package. I didn't see that.
Yeah, you gotta check the radio package. And the um.
Lighting package.
The lighting package.
Okay.
One vehicle is four door, one vehicle is two door.
They need a motion to approve the resolution in front of us.
Yes. Does it read?
Yes.
Young.
Sponging, yes. Uh, purchase of one Chevy Bolt. Which is a all E electric bolt car, right?
Electric bolt, yeah.
Uh, and this is for the building department.
Building Department.
And this is replacing, whatever places three cars that was purchased in two thousand and seven. It was here too.
Yeah. So, so we've um, made a commitment that all small service vehicles, like the building department vehicles will now be.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it is amazing. It's it's a welcome change. We just hope it's not too late. If you read what the UN said. You know, we we're at the cusp of being too late.
If Mr. Sonoff is still with us, I think we qualify for a two thousand dollar rebate at the state level, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All of all, please all.
Trustee is Rollings.
Yes.
Does it read? Justy Lucas.
Yes.
Hi. Okay, uh, I received the, I I needed a a motion to add an item to the agenda. I'll make a motion to have the. Uh, all in favor of adding the item to agenda? Okay, uh, what the item is, it's opposition to the discharge of contaminated water into the Hudson River. This was sent to us uh, by our compatriots on the west side of the county. They're decommissioning the nuclear power plant in Buchanan, New York. And uh, the company Holtech that has been hired to do the cleanup of the uh. Plant uh, wants to release a million gallons worth of radioactive water into the Hudson River. The people on that side of the community feel like this might cause some problems and I could see uh, how they got that idea. So this is a resolution uh, that is supported by Pete Harkum, Steve Otis, Dana Levenberg. And uh, State Senator Shelley Myers. And it goes to the federal government as Shelley Mayor, I'm sorry. It's getting late and and it goes to the uh. Federal government who controls the uh, regulation of nuclear power plants, asking them to halt this. And to force Holtech to find another way uh, to remediate that radioactive water. So you all have a copy of the resolution, so I won't go through it. Uh, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Trustee is Rollings.
Yes.
Does it read? Young.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
May Murphy.
Hi, thank you all and uh. Good luck to our. Compatriots on the other side of the county. Communication to the board round two.
Uh, I'd like to thank Jeremy for his answers today. Obviously, he did his homework. I'm gonna have to work a little harder. I'm a little disappointed. You gotta let Augie answer one of the questions because I like them to call you look good. Uh, we went over the budget, uh, just a couple of couple of quick things. I'm gonna wrap it up really quick. Sales tax has been extraordinarily high for the last three or four years. We had a raising sales tax. And with COVID, people started to buy a lot of stuff at home. I think it's, it I always, it shocked me, Jerry, Augie and everybody on the board. So that's why our sales tax uh, is high and our mortgage tax is very high. That makes uh, a part of the increase. I don't agree with everything else, but. Great minds are allowed to disagree.
Correct.
But I did like the answers that I did get tonight and I look forward to the other hearings. And I'd like to also congratulate the new board. I haven't been here for a while for obvious reasons. Uh, they're not all this bad, okay? Go get a good night's sleep and everything. Enjoy. I'll see you at the, at the budget hearings.
Glad to have you back, Leonard. I hope you're on the mend, buddy. Report from Village Manager.
Mayor, two items tonight, uh, and then I have to bow for the records, but um. Uh, this past Wednesday, Neri and I met with uh, several individuals. Uh, from our community, uh, mostly from the Latino community and um, as part of um. Uh, somewhat related to um, my flood report, which of course we had the discussion with the. Uh, with GHD and Kevin and Kevin Cantino uh, this evening. So I just wanted to report to the board that um. We are starting to have people who typically would not approach us in village hall. Uh, to approach us and to talk about um, Governor's Office. Of storm recovery and the um, anticipated. Meetings that we're going to have with them, as well as providing space in village hall, so that they can assist individuals who lost everything. Um, with some financial uh, relief uh, coming up in the community. So I just want to continue to put the word out there. Um, this past Wednesday was the the highest attendance. We actually went. For the solid two hours uh, with discussions uh, with six people. Um, one, one uh, related uh, cousin, uh, Primos, Primas. Uh, came in because of some parking issues, which we were able to resolve in in the Washingtonville area. Uh, but the others were very interested in trying to get um. Some relief back uh, from the total loss that they had during the uh, during Hurricane Ida. The second things, I'm very proud to report that um, our village planner, Mr. Greg Cutler. Will be rejoining us on April seventeenth. Um, to um. Be a co-department head with Karolina Ponseca. Um, and joining our village again. Uh, he's provided notice to uh, the village of Scarsdale. And we anticipate uh, his return to our uh, to our village.
That's good news.
Nice.
Um. I just want, you know, what you've done, uh, reaching out to the immigrant. Community and to the community uh, who doesn't speak English as their first language. Is really a huge step forward. And you know, it's it's, I think, twenty five to thirty percent of our population immigrant. Who never felt, or you historically hasn't felt comfortable approaching government. And they they didn't realize that government can be an ally. And uh, it it's not something, it's least in the village of America to be feared. And uh, that really. Is important to me and I think the rest of this board. And. I never see anybody on Facebook or next door mention it.
So, so I need to thank this board, actually, because I've worked for two counties.
Yeah.
And I've worked for three municipalities, one of them is Village Memorial. And the elected officials that I've worked for have never allowed me. To expand into areas like this before. Uh, they didn't think it was necessary. They didn't think it was valuable. They didn't think it it could provide anything. But when we're sitting there, my man Neri and I, and we're helping people and their smiles. Because they actually have some relief. It just makes that night just the best and, you know, I can't keep my mouth shut, so I send you an email. And then Neri gives you a recap the next day and we're just flying high.
God knows you can't keep a mouth shut.
Yeah. But but it really is. It really is because this village board allows me to present a crazy idea. And move forward with the crazy idea and actually make it happen. So I appreciate that very much.
There is definitely something to say when you um. With representation, there's always something to say because people gravitate to people who normally. Are look like them or who normally go through the same things that they go through. I gravitate that way. So if I see somebody who has shared experiences or definitely looks like me, then I'm I'm really excited. I was excited to see somebody else in the work and knew, even if it was just a temp in the in the village in your office the other day and I was like. Okay. No, another, the guy.
Oh, the guy. Oh, yeah.
And it just. Yes, he's all good guy. Um, but it it's. It's everybody's guy, but it 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 does say something when representate, because representation matters. And I'm glad that the village is moving forward. We're trying to ensure that all of our community is well represented.
And and this is kind of what I've been talking about recently. Nobody's reporting or talking about the progress. And you know, it it I know it's all right and at the end, the people will see it. Because you know, that that's been my experience uh, over these two decades. But it's very frustrating. It must be very hard for staff to see that and for new elected officials, you know, I I would just say, let's keep doing what you're doing. And the cream rises to the top.
Yep.
You know, people will see the tangible results.
filing for the record, I have the Halsted Avenue Safety Improvement Project Agreement as well as the Southeast Consortium Agreement. Thank you very much.
Oh, my friend. Here's bear. I have two items. Uh, the first is file for the record, the employer retention agreement with the village manager.
Is that the secret one?
It was announced in open session.
Okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't help myself.
Second item is residential hang tags will expire April first, twenty twenty three, either come into village hall or renew them online.
Well, we just explain to people briefly what residential hang tags are, is that?
Different sections of the village, we have different hang tags that allow you to park on the street. And you basically hang on the.
Right. Somebody watching at home might not automatically.
Yeah, purple zone or a green zone.
The the parking hang tags, got it.
Thank you, woman.
My pleasure.
Village Attorney, you have stuff to say tonight?
I have one, but I guess. Three local laws that were accepted for filing and began effective on March sixth. The first was a letter of math.
Law mark.
The law. Well, the second was the law regarding the process for. Was the law that regulated the cost of counsel when Bill provides counsel for. Uh, officials who are subject to administrative process.
So it's no longer an open checkbook. There's some controls on our calls. Which is very important when you talk about budgeting, right? Uh, minutes commissioned, boards and committees, minutes of a board trustee work session and regular meeting for March thirteenth. And a special meeting of March third, twenty twenty three. Minutes of February twenty second, uh, twenty twenty three for the planning board and minutes of February fourteenth, traffic committee meeting. Uh, just before we adjourn, I want to wish everybody.
One more, you got the uh, March first.
It's not on mine.
It's not on mine either.
I have it.
Plus.
I got it.
Minutes of March first, twenty twenty-three, Committee for the Environment.
I don't know what I was looking for.
I would just like to wish everybody uh, who celebrates Easter, Happy Easter. Uh, next Friday, or next Thursday starts Holy Week. And uh, you know, it's a very solemn week for a lot of folks. Followed by a joyous uh, occasion, actually the most important holiday in Christendom.
On twenty-third is Ramadan.
Right, and, and, and uh, Muslim holidays uh, have started, and soon our uh, Jewish neighbors will be celebrating Pesel. So I'd like to thank all those faiths for, you know, making this a diverse community, and I wish them all health and happiness in their celebrations. I need a motion to adjourn.
Just, there's one more thing that we.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna put this on the website, but we um.
Talk about.
Public Service Commission is holding hearings about Con Ed's request for a rate increase, so we will put this information on the website. Um, but there's some information from Catherine Parker about um, some facts that you can share and how you can testify, and the hearings are in the, on the thirtieth, on March twenty-ninth and March thirtieth, next couple of days. Thank you.
You would, you would have a rate increase, or like, the way I look at my Con Ed bill. I can't believe that that's not, I, I need a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. All in favor? All right.
Yes.
No, I'm gonna send it where you grab it.
You got funding creep, which, which is the uh, plus the electricity, the one they're looking for is the service to us.
Yeah, the service.
Yeah.
It's over already?
Understand.
Two years old when he was.
That's kind of so long.
So.
Now, do you really want to argue with me? You're at twenty percent, twenty percent, eighty percent.
Huh? Yeah, right.
I can't even tell. Believe me that. So that's the.